It is 7:02 PM and we do have a quorum. Everybody is present. In just a moment, I'll ask everybody to stand. We'll be led in a prayer by Councilmember Perro and then we'll be led in the pledges to the U.S. flag and then the Texas flag by Chief Arata. Let's stand.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity to come here in this town tonight in peace and harmony to talk about the business of this community that we might all join together to discuss the things that would improve and enhance the place where we live and that all would work for the same common goal. We ask you to help us to be civil and respectful of one another, even if our ideas may be different, that we can all move forward in a positive direction. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. Terminate somebody over there. Item one, discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on the regular session council agenda for February 24th, 2015, which is tonight. Does anybody have any questions about items that you want some clarification on before we get to them? Anyone?
Do we want to discuss whether we want to, how we want to handle executive session on two of the items that we do?
That'd be great to do. So, council, we have, we have on our agenda for executive session items that you might have questions about, dealing with real property and dealing with our particular issues that deal with decisions we might make in reference to Royal Troon and our ordinances and those kinds of things. So, one idea is that if we discuss those items in open session, which we need to do, and debate the issues, if you have legal advice, we could just table the item, deal with all the legal advice later in the meeting, and come out and take action if you need that. Otherwise, you might very well be going into executive session at different times on different items and that might be more difficult. So, I'm not quite sure what ends up better. If you have citizens here wanting to hear a decision, well, then they don't get to get the decision until we finish executive session. So, that's the downside of doing it that way. The upside of that is we only adjourn into executive session one time. Now, it could be that you don't have legal questions, but if you do, then we've agenda to take care of that if need be. And you can ask those legal questions and Patricia will advise you if you think that that discloses something that maybe shouldn't be disclosed or discussed in open session. So, when we get to those items, we'll see what you'd like to do with that. Do you have any comments about that or questions at this time that might work through the agenda?
I would personally like to have the, because I do have legal questions, at least on the C1, which is zoning and land use regulations as it relates to Royal Troon, which is item 13. So, I would definitely like to have the executive session prior to addressing that item in open session. Now, the other, the other one we have, C2 signage regulation. I don't know if anyone has anything relative to that, but I would think if they do, we would want to do the same thing there before we discuss the sign ordinance. I just think it's probably better to set the table before we, before we debate. That way, we're debating in the appropriate context.
And so, the sign ordinance is...
16.
Yeah. Item 16.
Item 16.
Right before council liaison.
Okay. So, it might be easier if we adjourn one time to executive session, deal with those both items, so you could push, we could push.
13 back.
One option is to hear Tom's report and ask him all his questions so he doesn't have to stay for the whole thing, try to deal with all those things you have questions about, and then Tom doesn't have to stay for us to consider the item necessarily and we could move the item down and do one session. So, however you think that works best. Tom, you're making two reports about the signage also, right?
On the roundabout.
On the roundabout?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else about tonight's agenda that gets a little strange or difficult to work through? All right. Hearing none, then, item two, discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on the upcoming regular session council meeting of March the 10th. And on page eight of your packet are some items that are listed there. One item is the consideration of annexation dealing with the land where the Church of the Latter Day Saints is located, and we may or may not, I guess, have that application.
I received something today from that.
Okay. So, it may very well be on that agenda, okay? And then the Verizon issue, will you be ready by the 13th or the 10th?
By the 10th. Yeah, we're meeting with Verizon this week, weather contingent, and we'll go from there. My plan is to be able to at least present you the preliminary outline and thoughts regarding that on March the 10th.
Okay. And also, we're considering the sealed bid.
That's correct. Yeah, we're in the process of gathering that information from the last council meeting that council asked us to look into and we'll be ready to present that.
All right. So, does anybody have anything else that we want to see brought up at the March the 10th meeting specifically?
Are we going to have, I noticed that number three of the future agenda is not on this agenda, which was scheduled February 24th. Would that just follow to March?
Regarding that item, that's not lost on me. What I'd like to do is be able to get a new planner in or a planning consultant person so that they would be part of that discussion and can hear from council. And so, it's definitely on my radar. I know it needs to come forward, but I'd like to have somebody here to assist with that process and hear from you directly.
Which item is that?
Number three, regarding townhomes, condos, and apartments.
So, we'll delay that until we get a planner on board. Anything else? We are down to citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, are a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates, that includes the topics of your statements. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Do we have anybody who signed up tonight? We do. We have Glenn Strother that wants to speak on item 13, but you want to wait till 13, Glenn?
I'm sure how long can I get to get there? If I could, I would be brief about that. And then I had a couple other items. I could hit off one at a time.
You know, if you want to talk about them all now, and we'll reserve the right that if you want to speak to 13 later, you can. Because if, if your comments are not about 13, when you get to 13, you couldn't do them. So, you're saying you have comments about 13 and other things?
Yeah.
Okay. So, why don't you come on up and do citizens' presentations and we'll deal with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. Glenn Strother, one over Hill Drive, have three real items I want to discuss briefly or just would request that the council maybe give a citizen's update at time. One is basically both the mud and the council have gone out of their way talking about we're going to harmonize relationships between the two government entities. And I have not seen much action towards that in the process. My big concern is that since the council oversees the PID and the mud is getting ready to spend, who knows what the latest number is, $8 to $14 million on improvement in a water treatment plant, that's going to affect all the citizens of the town. And since you have governing over the PID and when you're getting ready to spend that type of money, nobody can tell me that regardless of what spreadsheet you present, you're not going to increase debt and you've got to cover that and make that debt go away. So, that's either going to be raising taxes or raising water rates and/or sewer rates. There's no two ways around that. And since the council, again, has control on that piece, even though they have an agreement with the mud, I would think that would be far and center because, again, I still think there is better ways to accomplish that. And the simple question that I would propose to mud as well is if having your own water treatment facility is that such of a great idea and such cost-effective, then why isn't all the other communities around here doing it and why is everybody else tied into TRA? Very simple question. The second item is regarding development and where are we sitting on with the development of the 26 acres? We seem to have possibly gone backwards towards that process. I'd like to get an update of really where that sits. And again, my question there is the challenge is that you have a current developer that doesn't have any debt load on the land, that can't seem to make the numbers work. Those of you that are in the development business certainly understand it does take, you have to make the numbers work to make the thing work. If it doesn't go, he'll break the land up and sell it off and then you'll have debt concern with that and that developer come forward. And if you can't make the numbers work with no cost on the land, how are you going to make it work with the land? So, I would encourage the council to find a plan to go through. Otherwise, we're going to end up, as the mayor has spoke several years ago, as Trophy Club will become the donut hole. And then the last item is regarding item 13. I'm not exactly sure where that sits. I have heard some discussions about the possibility of removing the parking spaces and moving them. I don't know if that's still a possible discussion item or relief, but my understanding, I mean, the two challenges in that is lighting and noise. And you have an engineer here. Moving the parking lot and tearing that out over, and moving it a short distance is not going to change the lighting effect and is not not going to significantly reduce the noise lever. And you're looking at spending significant dollars moving that. So, I would strongly discourage the council of investing the hacker's money in that way. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strother. I don't have anyone else speaking, is that right? All right. All right. We will then go to consent agenda. And all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, an item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anybody wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing no one, I would entertain a motion to approve item 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 3 through 8.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Perro, seconded by Councilmember Lamont. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous and approved. All right. The time is 7:17 and we will convene a public hearing. A public hearing regarding an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to the town to repeal subsection 3 regulating administrative approval of site plan changes, section 5.09b, changes to the site plan of section 5.09, site plan requirements of Article 5 supplementary district regulations of chapter 13 zoning, zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the town. Anyone here to speak on that, in that public hearing? All right. No one wishing to speak. We will close the public hearing and reconvene into our regular session at 7:18. Item 10, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation proclaiming March 2015 as multiple melanoma awareness month, although we were going to try to wait till Mrs. Buck got here. So, I don't see her. So, without objection, we'll hold that one off and see if she arrives. So, we'll just hold off on item 10. Help remind me that we get back to that. Don't leave it, okay?
I'm going to remind Greg. Turn my neck.
Okay. Okay. Item 11, consider and take appropriate action regarding a preliminary plat for Hillside Point Block A, lots 1-33, CA1, CA2, and Block B. Lot 1 being a replat of Lot 4, Block B, Trophy Wood Business Center, containing approximately 5.596 acres of land located in the Town of Trophy Club, Tarrant County, Texas, and being located in Plan Development Number 33. Stephen, did you want to make any comments about this?
Yes, Mayor and council. This is a parcel of property generally located off Trophy Wood Drive, immediately to the south of Hannah Court and to the north of the Holiday Inn. It is, the preliminary plat is in compliance with the town subdivision rules and regulations. It did go before the PNZ for the first time on January 15th and then a second time on February 5th. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote in favor to move the plat, the preliminary plat forward. They did have a couple of items they wanted to address, such as clarification and some details they wanted to include on there. They also have some concerns regarding drainage that would be addressed at the final plat along with, there is an access easement that runs to the south that the developers currently working to clear up, and that would also need to be done prior to final plating. Our town engineer, Tom Rutledge, is here. If there's any type of questions you may have for him at this time.
All right. I do see PNZ chairman in the audience. Do you wish to make any comments? All right. None? Tom, any comments? None. Counsel, any questions of the town engineer?
No.
Councilmember Lamont?
Just Stephen, you had mentioned that we cannot turn this down.
That's correct. Under the rules of plating in the state of Texas, if it meets the subdivision rules and regulations, you have to approve it. By not approving it, that, that would, and Patricia may be better suited to answer this or clarify it, is that they, that the developer could take action and if you'd make no action on it, then it is automatically approved.
So, are you saying that if you tabled it, it's approved?
In 30 days.
In 30 days.
30 days, right. Okay.
I guess the follow-up question would be, if that's the case, why don't we put it on consent?
You absolutely have that option. We have not done that in past practice because many times there are questions that the council would like to ask. You know, sometimes there are issues with the plat that they would like to hash out. It just sort of depends. I know that there have been some concerns regarding drainage in this particular parcel of property. I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have before we move forward on the final plating.
All right. We do have a representative of the applicant here tonight. If they have any comments or questions, you don't have to make any, but give you the opportunity.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Hillside Point Block A, lots 1 through 33, CA, CA2, and Block B, Lot 1. Who would like to wish, make a motion?
We ought to repeat that.
I'll make the motion, we approve 0140 to approve the preliminary plat for Hillside Point.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So, it was moved by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All of those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, no opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you for coming tonight. So, I'm going to bring us back, because Mrs. Buck is here, to item 10. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation proclaiming March 2015 as multiple melanoma awareness month in Trophy Club. I would recognize Councilmember Perro to read the proclamation and for a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2015-03. A proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, establishing the month of March 2015 as multiple myeloma awareness month in Trophy Club. Whereas, multiple myeloma is a cancer of plasma cells, a type of white blood cell normally responsible for producing antibodies. And whereas, multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer worldwide and can occur at multiple sites in one's body with a variety of symptoms, thus making it hard to diagnose. And whereas, many people are unaware of myeloma until their diagnosis and when it goes undetected, it can cause broken bones, ongoing pain, renal failure, and death. And whereas, the disease is generally thought to be incurable but highly treatable and remissions may be induced with various treatments. And whereas, the many treatment options for myeloma include chemotherapy, radiation, stem cell transplantation, and many new and novel emerging therapies. And whereas, increased awareness for clinicians and the general public accompanied by continued investment and innovation will lead to earlier diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. Now, therefore, I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as multiple myeloma awareness month in the Town of Trophy Club, and I do hereby encourage all citizens to join me and the Town of Trophy Club Town Council in spreading awareness about this tragic condition so that individuals can be treated in a timely manner. Passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this, the 24th day of February 2015. And I make a motion that we approve proclamation number 2015-03.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
It is moved by Councilmember Perro, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. Before we vote, we'll entertain comments from anyone in the audience who wishes to speak.
Hi. I'm Jean Buck, 2401 Lilly Field Drive, Trophy Club. Mayor and council, I just wanted to say thank you very much for taking this under consideration and for reading the facts regarding multiple myeloma. I work for a company called Takeda Oncology, been there for about five years now, and we make a therapy that treats this blood cancer. As you heard from the proclamation, it is the second most common blood cancer worldwide. I've worked over the last five years with a local group in North Texas to bring awareness to this disease and to encourage people to be treated and more importantly, to be tested early. Like many other cancers, if you're tested early, then the prognosis can be better, not always. But it does allow for the opportunity for people to get the diagnostic test that they need and then go on to get treatment. So, on behalf of the International Myeloma Foundation and some citizens here at Trophy Club who actually support people with the disease and who are living with the disease, I just wanted to say thank you for considering it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Buck.
Oh, yes. I have cookies and I also have bracelets for awareness and I have pins. So, if anyone would like them, I'll put them on the back table.
Thank you very much. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the proclamation 2015-03, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. Jean, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So, now you'd have to remember to make me bring it back. All right. Item 12, consider and take appropriate action regarding general signage on poles and painted on roads regulating traffic within the roundabout. Tom, I recognize you to report to us.
Good evening. We've got Mike Wilson here with me tonight. Mike's one of my lead engineers on our team and was actually the project manager and lead engineer when we designed the roundabout. We have a traffic engineering group and Robert Jenkins, who was our traffic engineer at the time, retired in December, so didn't bother bringing anybody else from our traffic department because they weren't really familiar with the project. To give you, want to give you just a little bit of a background on this so you can understand the context of when we designed the roundabout and everything that went on with that so that it helps you understand as you make a decision tonight. When we were designing this back in, was it 2011, Mike? Was that about where we were?
2010.
2010? Is that where it was? There were some things that were in the background of this project that influenced the thing, the decisions that we made and the recommendations we've made to staff and council. One was during that time, there were a lot of the citizens in Trophy Club who were skeptical that this was a safe facility to construct. And so, there was some, some questions about safety and about traffic moving safely around the, around the roundabout. But more important to us at the time was that, and I don't know if this, okay, up on this mount, is that this is the safe routes to school that comes down here along Trophy Club Drive, crosses the roundabout, comes down through here, and then goes down the village trail, or coming back this way down Trophy Club Drive, crossing here, and then coming through this way. So, when, when we looked to design the roundabout, the MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and those are, that's your guidelines that we use for signage, and this is out of that MUTCD manual. And you can see that in the manual, there are optional signs that you have, and really all the optional signs are really related to pedestrian traffic. And so, when we, when we looked at that, we did, we took the conservative approach to this in that we felt like because it's a safe routes to school and today, as we all know, distracted driving is really a big deal. We have a lot of it and people do it at the craziest times, they do it. And so, knowing that we would have kiddos crossing in the area of the roundabout, this is, even though this is a school zone, safety was paramount in the decisions that we were, we made. And so, what we did is we took what were the optional signs for recommendations there and we included that. So, the slide that I have up here for you right now is the current signage as it was designed, as you see it out there today. And so, I just put some of the street view things up. So, as you're coming along, going north on Trophy Club Drive, you can see where I've got the mouse pointing, the pedestrian warrant signs, those are optional. But because that's the crossing for the safe routes, we felt like it would be important to have that. And so, that's, that's gives you an idea of that. So, then as you come along here, you can see some of the things that we did for the signage with pedestrian signage as you go around the roundabout. And again, you can see the pedestrian warning signs and the crossing signs that, that we have in there. So, this is just off of Google, kind of gives you the street signage there, which is mainly related to pedestrian crossings. So, coming back then to where we are, that the signage we have today, if it's your, if you decided and say, well, hey, we just want to put minimum signage up, that's what we're, what we really... if it's your, if you decided and say, well, hey, we just want to put minimum signage up, that's what we're, what we really want, then this is the signage that would be required. And so you can see that essentially what we're doing is, is we're pulling out any warnings related to pedestrian crossing. And so this is what the minimum signage requirements would be. So you'd either have the signage that talk, that has you warning about crossings coming up, and then, and then identifying exactly where those crossings are. Or you can take those out, and you basically have signage that's just for the traffic and the vehicular signage that, that you would have there. So stop right there and answer any questions that you might have. Yes, sir?
I have a question. Why was it, and you may not be the, the right guy to answer the question, but Stephen was around at this time, back then, obviously. Why was it that those two crosswalks right adjacent to the roundabout were identified as safe routes? I'll use Trophy Club Drive going eastbound as an, as an example. We have a crosswalk just off of, off of Meadow Creek Court. And we just voted to put flashers at that crosswalk because that's a critical crosswalk. Nobody lives between Meadow Creek Court and the roundabout. I mean, my oldest kid's two and a half, she's not walking across this thing. But if she was, I'm not telling my kids to cross at the roundabout. I've never seen anyone try to cross there. I think that Tom's pointing out something that we did because of a designation that we, that we made, but maybe we made the wrong designation. Maybe we should consider what it would, if we've got ample crosswalks elsewhere to overcome that, with the exception being the connection to Village Trail right there. I don't know if there's a way to avoid that because obviously Lakeview is right there, but maybe on those other two, there's, you know, something to look at.
All right, Councilmember Perro.
I also noticed in your illustration, I don't see the six additional twenty mile per hour speed signs on that, which would add six more signs to that layout that you have that are posted right before you approach the roundabout.
Those were added after the fact, after the original plan, after the original plan was done.
Okay, that was added, all right. Because that's just six more signs to consider. But my other question would be, to still have a crosswalk indicator on the right side of the road where typically the yield signs are located, speed limit signs are located, and so on. Instead of having two signs, or three, depending on, on the crosswalk, we just put the one and show a crosswalk from the right, like we do with most other signs, and take out the ones that are in the middle. So you have one from the right on each entryway, and that would cut out six signs.
You know, and, and here's the reason for that. And it kind of goes back to, when you get back to the, on the recommendations, you can see that they have that, oh, I don't know what's going on. Am I okay? And here, and the reason that you do, and the reason that that's recom, or that's optional, and the reason that we chose to do it, which I, maybe I've lost my connection.
I think it told you it was gonna reboot in six seconds.
Oh, it did? Well, to keep that going, the, the reason we did that, Jim, is that where those are there, that's a refuge island there. And so when the cars are coming here, if you're in this inside lane and there are people crossing from left to right, if they end up in that refuge lane, you want that driver, not just thinking if somebody's coming from the right, but if somebody gets in that refuge island there, it's saying, hey, they're, we're pointing them that there are pedestrians crossing. Because the roundabout being spread so far wide under a normal intersection, you, you've got so many different movements going on in there. So with these refuge islands in here, when they cross, if somebody gets caught in here, it's so that the driver understands that I'm not just looking for somebody that normally would cross from my right, they could be coming from my left. That's the reasoning for it. It may not be a good enough reason to keep the sign there. And certainly, if you guys said, hey, well, let's take some of them out, we think it's overdone. There's nothing that says that you're in violation of any guidelines because those are optional. Yes, sir?
Tom, one question I have, Ryland brings up, I think, a really good point. So on Trophy Club Drive, right before where it bifurcates on either end, could we not have the pedestrian crossing be down there, or does it need to be in the roundabout?
It, it doesn't. You know, I, I don't know how the whole round, or the, the safe routes to school came along at the time. I know that back then, that project was done under, was it Brandon that did that project, the former town manager? Did that project with another engineering consultant. But when we came along, it, that was, this was the route that had been defined.
Yeah, and, and that's, and I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, I'm asking the question because I, I was actually driving through this just a week ago, and because of Jim's presentation, I was paying attention to the signs. And there was actually two moms walking with their two kids in a stroller through that intersection right there. And I didn't see them, and it scared, scared me to death. So I, I would think that if we did something, we may just pull those out away from that roundabout because there's so much confusion going on there. I know that may be the way it's set up, but I guess my question is, could we pull those crosswalks out so people would be inclined to cross before the road, you know, before the bifurcation, like right down there?
You're saying pull this?
Yeah, pull that back down.
Further back?
Keep going.
All the way down to the island.
Where it splits, right there.
Right here?
Yeah.
You know, I, I'd probably need to look into that. One, one of the things that, when, you know, traffic engineers and just right, just in general, engineering judgment, and a lot of it's learned from experience. There's a lot of times some of these things that aren't published by Ashtoe or other things. What they, what they typically discourage you from doing is having mid, what they call mid-block crosswalks. Crosswalks that kind of come up on you and you're not expecting that that's a normal place to cross. So normally, you're crossing at intersections. And so the roundabout is kind of a quasi-intersection that we, used to be a three-way, and this is, this is where everybody was crossing. When you come into the roundabout, as you have posted at twenty, you're reducing your speed. And so it's got your attention, you're, you're looking for your movement, and so it already has you slowing down. Whereas if we tend to cross them back, back in here somewhere, they're not in that mode of necessarily looking. So it could catch somebody off guard, not anticipating that there would be a crosswalk there. You know, we've, I've always wondered about, about this, is that whether the round, the safe routes should have been further back up at this one intersection to get them to cross up that first intersection on Trophy Club and get them on this side of the street. The fact is, we still have a crosswalk there, and it would be substantial to go in here and rework that. It'd be pretty expensive to take that crosswalk out.
I, I understand there'd be a cost, cost involved in it. It's, it's, it truly is a scare. I mean, I think the roundabout looks fantastic, but it's scary when you, when you're in there driving and there's two lanes of traffic, and all of a sudden you've got a kid trying to cross his bike.
So let me ask a question, and then I have Stephen wanting to comment, and then Ryland. So go, I don't know whether you're going back or forward.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, sorry, I was trying to get to that. Okay, sorry.
That's good for me.
Okay.
So aren't we putting flashers down on Trophy Club Drive?
At Meadow Creek.
Meadow Creek, which is kind of where the DR period is, right?
A little further, just another.
Yes, sir.
A little bit further out of the.
It's across the, it's across the creek.
Across the creek.
Across the creek, okay.
And that's where my comment was going to be directed, is that, and Chief Arada might be able to expand a little more on this. But one of the concerns that we have, and one reason why we like to have the flashers there on Meadow Brook is because of the way the, the topography of the street. And then also, that is where we have a posted crossing guard because that's generally the location where students are going to and from school. If they're on the north side of Trophy Club Drive, they come down to Meadow Brook, they cross there with the, with, with the cross, with the
Crossing guard.
The crossing guard, sorry, I drew a blank. And then they go over to, to Trophy Lake and Village
Trail.
Uh, Trail, and they cross there. And then in the afternoons, they go back to reverse, and then they cross over at Meadow Brook. And, and, you know, I, I try to drive around there, and you don't see too many students deviating from that at all. And so that's, I don't see too many students crossing in the middle of the roundabout. You know, I think most, you may see adults or adults with children, but not students by themselves.
Ryland?
Yeah, I was, what I was actually gonna say was built upon what you just said, which is we've, so five, six years ago, we designated safe routes to school, and that necessitated placing crosswalks here. But we've been talking about crosswalks a lot. We have crossing guards posted at several places, but not at those two crosswalks. We just had a discussion to spend forty thousand dollars on crosswalk flashers all over town, including the one there at Village Trail and Trophy Lake Drive. And we didn't even discuss those two crosswalks. If, if I could go back in time, I would say there's no need to even have the crosswalks there. So I'm not saying we should spend any money to, to get rid of them, but I do think the fact that we don't post guards there, the fact that we didn't even bring them up when we talked about kids getting to and from school, kind of tells us what they really are, which is that they're kind of way down the list of use. So that should inform us as to how we want to sign them.
Phillip, you had some comments?
I think the problem, though, is, is like Tom says, if you, you know, as you get to a circle or a, what would be a traffic light, you expect a, a crosswalk, or that's the normal engineering thing. And I think the problem with, with this is you probably need the crossing lights there because you need something to undistract you from concentrating on a car coming around the roundabout. So in other words, what Garrett said is he almost ran upon somebody because he was paying attention to the cars coming around the roundabout. And so if you had lights that, you know, got your attention, that somebody wants to cross, perhaps that then slows you down or stops you.
My concern would be that if we did anything to draw more foot traffic here, we would be actually making it, making it a worse scenario.
But the thing about it is, is we can't stop the foot traffic if we have the walk.
No, but we could certainly do something that might bring people in.
And this goes back, if you have that, you have, you already have, and that's what he's, what Tom's saying is that it's gonna cost quite a bit because you have the opening right there that's already designed, you have the brick going across. So you, you really are saying, and what we've discussed on different occasions, if you come across a brick, it means a crosswalk, you know? And so you're, you're gonna have to either take all that out, make that island go across. So it's, it's gonna be a lot of money to undo what is already done. And so perhaps you need something to, to alert you, which was, is what the intention of the lights are.
So I'll come to you, Greg, in just a second. To me, we're talking about almost two topics. One of them is signage, but if you remove signage, you are affecting those crosswalks. So I, I understand how they're related, and I think they, they go together. But I think we would all agree, well, I shouldn't say that. I would support the idea that where the crosswalk is on Trophy Club Drive for kids at Meadow Brook Creek?
Meadow Creek, yeah.
Meadow Creek? That's an appropriate place for them to cross, already used to doing that, there's already a crossing guard there. I don't see that you try to change their pattern necessarily. But I do see people crossing where Tom was talking about, almost like they're going to the Tom Thumb Center or coming back from the Tom Thumb Center. And if you think about the fact that there are all those homes up north on Trophy Club Drive, if people were walking, they're gonna cross there to get to the Tom, Tom Thumb Center. They're not necessarily gonna cross and go across to the church.
But that's, that's what I'm saying. Those people need protected just as much as a kid walking across.
And so the issue of maybe flashing lights there is a separate issue and would require funding to do that. My understanding is they wouldn't be on a timer, it would be push the button, now they blink. That'll alert you that somebody's crossing, and maybe that's a worthwhile thing to consider in the future to deal with that.
But if we did that, would that reduce the signage? That's, that's kind of the heart of the question.
I think it could. It surely could probably take out the middle ones because now that things are flashing, you're gonna see that something's happening. And if the objective is reduce the sign. So Councilmember Lamont and then Councilmember Rowe.
Two questions. One, if we wanted to remove them, is it, is there a difficulty to it, or is it very expensive? And, no? And the other thing is.
Staff, I think, Ed, Ed could probably do that, right?
We could do that in-house.
And in the area, are the roundabouts, I realize we have a two-lane roundabout, which makes it even more difficult. We're most of them in the Area One. Are there crosswalks that close to the roundabout? It just seems to be coming out of a roundabout with people crossing. And I think flashing lights would be worse because now you've got somebody in a roundabout and you see flashing lights.
This, this is out of the MUTCD. This is what you normally see, and you can see where the crosswalks are. I don't know if you're familiar or not, but city of Fort Worth has gone roundabout crazy. They've come up with a philosophy that now, no projects that Mike and I are involved in, if you come up with a project that is going to be signalized, they make you go through a study first to see if a roundabout can be put there because they don't want to maintain signals. They are going up everywhere. And so what we're seeing is, this is a, this is the recommendation on, you can see where the crosswalks are. This is consistent with how the crosswalks are recommended because it's consistent with an intersection. And so we haven't seen, really, I don't think, Mike, we haven't seen any deviation from this with crosswalks. And Fort Worth is literally constructing dozens of them now. And we've done others. So this is pretty much the standard for crosswalks, whether it is a safe routes or not. You know, for us, public safety is always our priority of everything that we do. It always starts as number one, and then we work down from there. And so when, when it comes to things like this, these were the things we discussed with council when we made the council presentation when we designed the roundabout. As you can see here, those signs that are shown here as being optional are those related to the crosswalk there. So you know, whether it's, you want to replace it with a flashing light, that's an optional thing you could do. Or there may be some rumble strips we could put in that gets people's attention, you know, those are other things that could be done. I mean, if, if you want us to look into other things, we can certainly do that. At least tonight, whether you make a decision or not, I wanted you at least to have the whole picture so it helps you guys make a decision. And I understand there's a balance of sign pollution and, and safety. And so I know that can be a tough decision.
All right, I think Councilmember Rowe and then Perro.
Yeah. Tom, can you go back to the aerial?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, so Nick, you and Phillip both were talking, you said you didn't know if, if installing flashers there, where Phillip was talking about, would be able to reduce our signage or not, but I, I agree that I think it would. And, and part of the reason is that we've already decided to do flashers there at Village Trail and Trophy Lake, right? And so that should render some of the existing signage possibly redundant. If you did the same there at the one that, that Phillip was bringing up, and that you made the point about people would be crossing there from the Aaronberg's property there, right? I, what I see there is that if you emphasize those two spots as crossing, you, you've rendered the northernmost one redundant because of the one at Village Trail and Trophy Lake Drive. It's so close to the northern one that I don't think you need that one. And that you, you could possibly eliminate that one and then eliminate even more signage. Because if you, I, I don't see a scenario where you would absolutely have to cross at the northern crosswalk that you wouldn't be able to just do it at Village Trail. You might, you know, walk an extra three hundred yards, but anything that can reduce pedestrian traffic near, near the center of that roundabout, I'm all for.
All right, Councilmember Perro.
Going along the comments that Councilman Reed has made about the confusion, and he didn't see those folks in the crosswalk, one of the other things that I'd seen when I was doing my study was that frequently pavement markings are used as a supplement or in lieu of a sign.
That's right.
Because pavement markings fall into your normal field of vision as you're driving forward, and you don't have to look up or anything else. And since you're looking to your left as you approach the roundabout, you will, in your peripheral vision, see that pavement marking. So if we were to take down some of the signage where the crosswalks are and mark the pavement instead, and show the crosswalk on the pavement, and instead of the sign, that might be one way to accomplish two things. And number two, part of the other problem with this design is the close proximity of Village Trail to the yield lane coming from Trophy Club Drive to Trophy Lake, and the proximity of vehicles in the roundabout trying to get over to Village Trail, and the cars driving through the yield sign
That's right.
and trying to get left into Trophy, into the shopping center. I don't see any addressing that. And the double marking on the pass-through lane along the Commons and the Golf, and the along the commons and the golf court, and the tennis courts because people cross from the roundabout into that lane or from that lane into the roundabout because it's not properly marked for no crossing over. Uh, and I was, didn't know if you're gonna cover that as well.
I, I, I can, if, if you-
Isn't that marked with a solid white line?
Yeah, uh, let me-
Means you're not supposed to cross, but-
Yeah.
No, according to what I was told, uh, that's not sightable. You have to have a double separated white line-
So-
-to not cross.
Is that right?
I believe, chief.
Here we are, coming in to Trophy Club Drive going north. Here's the Refuge Island. We're crossing from the shopping center cross over to the, uh,
Commons.
Commons. And so there's our signs there. And you can see then we pick up a solid white line there. And so when you get in, if you're in this lane, you got a solid white line, so you can't cross over.
But, but that's the problem. You can cross over, according to what the chief has told me. That needs to be a double separated white line to make it a non-crossable lane.
Okay. So from your stand-
For enforcement purposes.
Yes.
But we have all of those on the highways on exits, which-
If you wanna, if you wanted to cite somebody for it, it has to be a double separated white line or yellow.
Okay.
Yellow. Just paint it. Paint it yellow.
All right. Well, that's different than what we've got there, but okay, that's good to know. And then kinda going back, I think to, um, let me get over here. So when we come into here, I think then the, the other question is, all right, so when you're in, in this right lane, you're gonna come up to Village Trail, you're coming there, Jim, and I, I understand where you're coming from. See if I can get us in there. No, I'm not there. Okay. So we've got this dashed, we have this dashed white line here. The, the challenge there is, and I'll tell you, when we were designing this, we went back and forth among our traffic engineers, and Mike and I did, and we kept going back and forth on that. The challenge with that is, and bear with me because I'm gonna flip back and forth between this. So when you're, when you're in this lane right here and the car coming around, if you're in the roundabout, you have the right of way. That, if we were to, if we were to extend this, we looked, actually had this island further down designed at one time. The concern was, is we were gonna push this car down to such a point that we didn't give him much time to transition to get over. And we didn't wanna get him too far down here because we wanted these cars, they're supposed to yield to him. So a car in this lane and in this lane yields to the roundabout, so it gives this car the right of way to go ahead and come over to make that turn. So we held that island back to allow that car that opportunity to give them the right of way to get over to that. So that's why we didn't stripe it solid white, thinking that they couldn't cross it, cross it. And that's why it's a dashed white to give them. And so that's why the island was held back and that's why the striping was done that way.
All right. Phillip, you had some comments?
I did about something else, but I, I would like to ask Chief Arata if, do, do you see a lot of accidents or close calls right there with people not yielding?
There's no, there's only been, we average about one accident a year in the whole roundabout.
Right.
So we have seen issues where people have to slam on their brakes.
At, at that particular-
That should yield, didn't know.
Yeah.
That's the most common.
See, it, it, it would seem, it would, it would seem like that you, it, it would've been better to force all of those, all of those people into the roundabout just at that point. So that, you know what I mean? So they would yield to the roundabout. That's, that would seem like a better design, but I'm not a, you're, you're the professional, not me.
Yeah, well, and the thing about it is, you, we're dealing with, and, and I think Greg mentioned it, we're, we're dealing with, uh, you know, not hardly any roundabout is ever the same. We, we have a, a four-lane divided roadway here. So you've got a, a double-lane roundabout with also unique movements in that, uh, this movement coming up Trophy Lake Drive. What we did was, we knew with the shopping center and actually talking to the folks in the shopping center where their truck route was, we knew going into this that the trucks would come around here and go to the back. So we created this lane as more of a free right turn. We didn't wanna put them in the roundabout. We didn't wanna create truck conflict with people in here, so we separated that.
No, and I think that, I think that lane and the lane next to the commons are perfect. They're great. It's just the one lane where they have to yield.
This lane right here?
Right. Because people don't wanna yield. That's the problem.
Yeah. And there is signage back up here, you know, and people don't always pay attention to the signs, but it, there's a sign that says right, you know, right lane must turn right. And so if you get in this lane, you're to stay in this lane. And if you're in this lane, you're not in the roundabout. So we tried to segregate that in a way so that people weren't coming up to the roundabout and then making their decision, do I wanna be in the roundabout or am I gonna go ahead and go Trophy Lake Drive? So the signage back up this way identifies for people to tell them, if you're gonna go nor, go south on Trophy Lake, you're in that right lane, and then you're in the left lane, then you have that option of either going to Trophy Lake or being in the roundabout.
If we didn't have Village Trail, that would be a perfect lane, but-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that would be-
It's that yield that people just don't wanna yield.
Right.
And then the other thing that, Nick, that I was gonna say is, uh, Colleyville, I don't know if you've looked at the, the Colleyville roundabouts, but they actually have lights for pedestrians when they cross at Pool and Glead right there.
All right. Tim, you had your hand up for comments?
Yeah, I, I, I think the roundabouts, you know, works, if you know how to drive a roundabout, it's, it's fine. I mean, it's, we have a lot of issues with staff, I mean, um, residents not driving properly. The one question I do have though, which is happening more and more now, and Phillip touched upon it briefly, is not just the yield in that road, but now people are getting into the left lane, flying through, and then cutting in people, in front of the people who are yielding. What, is there any way, because that's almost creating accidents. So the person is coming in the right-hand lane next to the church waiting, or just starting to go because they see the, the roundabout open. But the person came up in the left lane, he's supposed to stay in the roundabout, but instead he turns right and then cuts over and actually cuts all the way over to get onto Village Trail. Is there, is there anything that can be done to, you know, mitigate that? Or we, I mean, it's just enforcement issue. If it's just enforcement issue, then I'm fine.
We can add more signs.
But I mean, that's the only- I, he's not technically wrong, but I mean, right.
Getting in the roundabout and, yeah.
So let me kind of interject-
They're still supposed to yield before they get into the roundabout.
So let me interject here, uh,
Yes.
to, to try to get us past all of this discussion. I think, uh, staff has heard issues and options, and I tried to at least identify a couple of things that we maybe wanna bring back, uh, as recommendations, if you feel so. And anybody can add to this. I'm just trying to move us on. And one of those is, there was a discussion about potential additional flashers that, where the brick crossover is between the commons and the Tom Thumb Center. And so if that's something you wanna consider, uh, there's a financial aspect of that and then we should come back and, and discuss that if that's the recommendation. The other thing, and I support it, but I don't know how everybody else feels, that's the reason I'm gonna list it is so you can comment, is potential street marking, therefore eliminating maybe some signs. I think that's a good idea. It's probably more maintenance because every year you're probably there back painting the signage again. But, it, so what I'm kind of suggesting is, let's give some direction, uh, to Stephen and staff working with the engineers to come back and say, this is what we say do. And obviously the chief and his input, which might include striping different in certain parts. Uh, in fact, it might include buttons that make it, at least make your tires make noise. And if you cross over and maybe shouldn't be, um, you maybe learn something about it. I remember driving roundabout, two-lane roundabouts in the greater Phoenix area, and they actually put curbs so that once you entered that right-hand lane, you couldn't unless you wanted to really go over a curb, get into the roundabout. And so you had to go on down and everybody went down further and did a U-turn, which maybe was worse. But, uh, that's what I did because I made those mistakes. But I think what I'm saying, council, what specific things would you like staff to consider that can come back to us so that we can take action if there's money needed? So Jim?
Ed Hilton told me he has some big, large six-inch buttons that if we were to re-stripe the pass-through lane from Trophy Club to Trophy Club, you can put the double separated lines plus big, large buttons in between, which would minimize the crossover. Also, you might wanna consider cobblestoning the yield lane from Trophy Club to Trophy Lake in the vicinity of the yield sign, and also putting a larger yield on the ground, on the pavement. So you, you hear it as well as see it, and that might just help slow down some of the inattentive drivers.
Okay. All right. So I heard one additional recommendation to look at, which was potentially using buttons or-
And the cobblestone.
And the cobblestone ideas. Okay. Anybody else have some ideas that you want staff to take direction on and try to come up with ideas? Tom, did you have something you wanted to say? No, sir. Anybody else? All right. Ryland?
I'd just like for us to vet our safe routes designations. See if there's a, uh, more optimal, uh, way to designate those safe routes, particularly as it relates to this northern crosswalk. I feel like it's redundant. The others, I think there's cases for, but-
Yeah, the northern one where we have, uh, brick or something there now, it's almost like take all the signs out except a sign that faces, if you were gonna be a pedestrian, and say not a crosswalk or something, or say-
Go back.
Go down here for the crosswalk. I don't necessarily wanna spend money to take out the brick, but I think as long as the bricks there, people are gonna use it as a crosswalk.
Yeah.
So what I hear from council is, is to, uh, work with Chief Arata and Ed and Tom and his staff to look at where it makes sense to perhaps eliminate some over signage. Uh, where can we maybe install a double white line or some buttons as well as paint markings on the street and then kind of vet that through kind of on a staff level and then bring back a recommendation to council and, and let you guys discuss it.
I'd also like, you know, the lights. I'd like to look into that because I, I think that what we're telling the town is when you see lights, that's, take caution, you know? That's, that's what we designate as high-value areas.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Okay. I'd like to also know from Chief Arata if he feels just the plain yellow line would be just as good or, um, a, as good as a double white line. You know, does that, does that, um, actually accomplish the same, same goal for less money? Or what would you rather do?
By the commons? It does. Instead of the buttons?
Yeah.
Instead of the buttons?
Uh, whatever you decide. I just, you know, I don't wanna throw everything out there if we can get away with just painting a line and it's gonna do the same job and you can-
Well, we're talking about two issues. One is a, uh, stopping people from going out of that with the buttons. The six-inch buttons definitely would keep people in that travel lane.
Okay.
Which is, that's the intention. The yellow line or double white line would allow enforcement to happen. We would issue tickets at that point.
Is that, I'm thinking the double line with the buttons, you don't have much space there, right? So-
It's pretty narrow in the right-hand lane.
So you can get away with one, one-
Taking just a few inches out of the, out of the loop.
And you, you have, do the trucks come out of Tom Thumb or they, uh, sit down? They would have to go through the roundabout, right?
They do.
And they're wide enough where they might be going over the buttons unintentionally and cracking them?
Um, well, they could. Uh, and they, they do go, and that's what this brick, this, this section in here is when those trucks, those trailers will drag across, but they'll tend to cut that inside lane.
And-
And it was designed for that-
That's right.
With that in mind.
That's the interior, but mo-most drivers would say, well, I wanna ride on the roundabout. I'll, I'll move over a little bit and bump, 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 bump.
Yes, sir.
And there go the buttons. I like the yellow line.
Okay. So-
I just wanna say I'm in favor of, uh, Jim's suggestion, Ryland's suggestion, that we send it back to staff and Chief Arata and let the group come back to us with-
I agree.
Or, and Phillip's as well with the flashers, so.
But he wasn't in mind.
I'm used to him just being out of order, so making a, you know.
Okay. So I think what I've heard, Stephen, I think you delineated pretty well, understanding what we're looking for you to do is come back to us. Uh, otherwise we'll discuss this forever. And, and, uh, it'll allow some citizens, if they have some input, to offer that input. Did anybody wanna speak on this that's in the audience? I don't know why everybody's here, so could be you had opinions about that.
They like to party.
Well, there are cookies over there, right? Are there still cookies over there for people and, and ribbons and stuff? All right. Tom, thank you for that.
You're welcome. One thing I would say, and just closing on this end, it, it's encouraging what Chief Arata just said a moment ago that, uh, in, in one year, we've had one accident. And so we don't wanna lose that because you, apparently whatever we do have, even though we don't like all the signage, we, we don't wanna go so far as that we start creating more confusion and we do this carefully. And so I think having you there, chief, with us as we talk through this, um, I'd hate to make a lot of changes and then we see, uh, accidents increase. So we'll wanna make sure we're careful there.
I guess one last comment that I'll make is, there seemed to be a lot more discussion about this six months ago or greater. I think people began to learn something about how to drive it and what the signage meant. Uh, so maybe that's reduced some of the comments, but it'll be interesting to see what happens from citizen comments as we discuss this a little further. Tom, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other discussion on item 12, we'll move to 13. Is that all right? Discuss study design options provided by the town engineer for additional buffering for the Royal Troon neighborhood adjacent to Independence Park and the pool complex per town council action taken on January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen. Consider to take appropriate action regarding saying. So Tom, I think you have a presentation for this also.
Yes. Stephen came to me, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, somewhere in that timeframe, and said there was a desire to look at some things, uh, related to, uh, landscaping and parking there at Royal Troon and the splash pad area. And so, um, the way Stephen described it to me as we've met and looked at this was to look at three different areas that I have up here on, on this aerial, uh, here. One, to, uh, come in here on, in this area and even though it doesn't show it here, we kinda missed that, but was to take out two parking stalls and, uh, plant trees in there and then have enhanced landscaping in this, in this area. And the other area was to look at taking out eighteen parking spaces and, and putting in, uh, landscaping, uh, screening in that area. And then area three would be where we would go in there and then put parking, uh, up in that area. If, if, uh, the area two was taken, then we'd go up here and we'd put parking up there. Mike's gonna hand out to you what I did in working through with Stephen, went in here and we broke down the cost of that and, um, you know, we took a, a fairly conservative approach to this. But naturally, when you're talking about this, everything is always related to what's it gonna cost. So wanted to give you, uh, just a, this is a very broad brush of, of, uh, looking at the cost of this. It's without us doing any really careful analysis about anything. Sorry, Adam. I thought I made enough copies.
I'm hurt. It's okay.
It's all right. I'll make it up to you. So if you take area one, what we did was take the west end of the parking lot, add two more islands in the parking and place six-inch trees. It seemed like that was kind of the criteria, Stephen, that we were working from was substantial landscaping there. Uh, and then also this, this open area to extensively landscape that. So planting six-inch trees, we'd get a seven trees. Those trees are about twenty-five hundred dollars a piece. There, you look at a six-inch tree and the, the ball on it, you take, you know, it's about ten inches per inch. So six-inch tree, you'd have sixty inches or five foot of diameter of, of tree root. That's why those things are so big and they're, and it usually takes a small crane to set them. And then we had the additional landscape and irrigation in there. And so that, that thirty-nine thousand five hundred is for the, uh, the trees and then that additional landscaping in area one. And area two, then it's forty thousand dollars to remove the eighteen parking spaces. Uh, the concrete removal, cost of six thousand. Planting the six-inch trees would be ten of those along that whole, uh, length of that area there. We're spacing those, by the way, about twenty feet apart. Normally you space them about forty on trees because of the canopy, but the, the direction was to get these- Normally you space them about 40 on trees because of the canopy, but the, the direction was to get these dense. And so that's why we have that many trees and then the additional landscaping and shrubs that we'd have in there of 9,000. So you'd have $40,000 in the improvements there. And then area three, I just said provide additional eight, up to 20 spaces. I was just kind of rounding that number up if we were going to put parking in there, we just, we haven't studied it. I can't tell you how many parking spaces we could really get in there. We, but we said, okay, if we did 20 parking spaces at $3,000 each, which covers the grading, the concrete. Any islands that you'd have, any parking lot lighting that you'd have in that area and then the, the appropriate striping and curbs. And so that's about, those usually end up around $3,000 a parking stall. And so you'd have about 60,000 for that, that parking lot there and then any additional landscape enhancements that you would have. That would be along that border of, of the Royal Troon area plus in the, in the parking area. That you have in there and that's how we came up with a number of 85,000. This is of like a 30,000 foot level of cost because we haven't really done a, a unique, a, a study of that, but this is what we normally do at this, this level. So this is where we are with that.
So I have a question about area three. If you put 20 spaces, how much of area three disappears? Half? Three quarters?
I, I think that it, it could be three quarters by the time you bring a, a drive around here and you loop back around into this. And because it's such an odd space, it's not going to be as efficient as a normal parking lot would be. So I think you're going to find yourself taking up a lot of area three to try to get 20 parking spaces. I haven't really studied that. This was just the first level. We said, let's just see how everybody's reaction was to this with cost and, and impact. And then if we want to take the next step, we can go in there and study it.
Adam, in area three, what happens in there now? Aren't there temporary facilities that people use in area three?
Soccer plays there pretty much year round. That's what three is.
So it's kind of an unmarked soccer field?
It's unlit, it's, it's unlit, a practice field for soccer is what it is.
All right. I don't see in any of this, although I was kind of expecting it, that in area one. There was some discussion about using bollards or a different type of device that could. Block off those parking spaces the majority of the time and open them up when we had peak season. Was that, did, did y'all discuss that with Tom? That's just something that the park board did?
I believe that got turned down.
Yeah, but I think, well, I think the reason we didn't refer it to Tom was because we already had the cost and it wasn't something required.
It's something that we can do in-house. We can get the price of the bollard and install them.
Trees we discussed for.
I think it's like 4,000, it would be about 4,000, Adam.
Yeah, it, it was on the document.
It's 4,800, yeah.
Yeah, and so we, we could do that in-house if we wanted to enhance that. We kind of know that cost, we know where we could place them, things like that.
Okay. All right. So council, any questions of Tom? Let's, let's try to get our questions out to Tom so that they don't have to stay for all of the debate necessarily. Anybody? Recognize this as a 30,000 foot level pricing.
That's right.
Where you have a study fee in there, Tom. If we wanted to go to the next step, we would probably spend that money just to do some detail work.
Yeah, that was to just give you an idea so you knew what you were going to pay us to do it. And what that would mean was I'd have one of my landscape architects, we would actually go in and get that a little more, a larger scale. To look at those trees and the shrubs so that you'd have an idea of the impact that would bring if you, if you did go that route.
Okay.
I have one quick, when you mentioned the size of the root ball on a six inch tree, how much? How much horizontal space? What's the radius you need? What is the diameter of the hole you need to plant a six inch tree?
Well, that, let's just say if you, rule of thumb is 10 inches per inch of there, so you have 60 inches on the ball, so that's five feet. And usually you're going to want at least another six to 10 inches outside.
Okay.
So you're going to need about a six to seven foot hole.
Okay.
For that tree.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Tom?
Yes, sir.
Somebody had mentioned in the previous meeting, the possibility of large tree planters. And putting large tree planters out there somewhere. Could a tree planter of that dimension you just mentioned be feasible for the long run as that tree grows and matures? Or would it just become root bound and die off?
It, it won't necessarily die. Trees are going to be restricted, just like when you put them in medians and other things. They're restricted by their ability for the roots to spread. And I'm not a landscape architect, I've just hung around enough of them to be dangerous. But that's what I've picked up over the years and so that's what happens. If you do keep them bound into a planter, then they're pretty much what the size you get them in, that's the size that they'll pretty much remain. Yes, sir.
Anybody else have other questions? Of Tom? All right. So I see that we have one citizen maybe that wants to speak or ask questions. So come on up, Jeanie, and if anybody else wants to, you can come up and identify yourself.
It's just a quick question for the town engineer. Was there anything in the packet that denoted what the cost for areas one, two, and three would be?
Only what we just got handed out, it wasn't in the packet.
If you don't mind, I'd like a copy.
And again, those were 30,000 foot level pricing.
Those are very conservative because we, all we're doing is taking square footage areas and tree spacing and that type of thing. And then once you get into the, into that, I mean, I guess it could even go up a little bit, but hopefully we're on the high end of this would be my.
So, so option one that said seven trees. Where are those seven trees going to go in area one? I shouldn't say option one.
Good question. So in this parking lot here, you have an island here now. We would have created another island here, another island here that we failed to communicate there. And so you'd add two trees there and then we would plant the balance of, there would be five more trees that we would put along in here. And then if, if you wanted more trees, then we'd have to add more, but then this was more of a dense landscaping from shrubs and everything in there. But the trees would be pretty much focused right in here.
So you're talking about three large trees in, in the parking areas.
Correct.
Creating two new islands.
Correct.
Right? And then taking the other five trees and spread them along.
In here.
Where you've got them.
That's right.
Okay. And so you may not know this, and I don't know if Adam found this out, the utility easement that, that is back in area two. That does not exist in area one?
Right, it doesn't.
Okay. All right, so you don't quite have the restrictions of the sense of staggering trees or planting things because you're not going to hit a utility.
It's, it's still fairly tight. I mean, yeah, the, the wall, your space there is still pretty tight.
Okay.
But you, you could, you could do as you did in two and put trees in between the Nelly R Stevens. Like I said, I think at some point the Nelly Rs would have to come out, the, the, the trees would encroach on them so badly.
All right. Anybody else have questions of clarification for Tom? Yes, Jim?
I have one more, again, I'm not a landscaper, I kill plastic plants as I've said before.
Then we're in the same boat.
If, if you had a large planter, but the large planter didn't have a bottom on it. Okay? And you were to place them along the wall in area one and two. As opposed to doing any excavating and tearing up the soil and getting into utilities and so on. And you just allowed that 10 foot planter, if you would, to just let the roots go down into the soil under. The perimeter of the planter box. Would that tree then be able to grow and, and survive better than it would if there was a bottom on that planter? And it was constrained to that, that physical box?
It, you know, and Adam can help me probably there. It, it, it'll put a taproot down like all trees do. The, the, where the tree gets its girth, the, the foliage where it really grows. Is going to be proportionate to the ability of the surface roots that feed it to spread out.
Okay.
So if those are, usually that's why we always say when you're working around a tree, stay out of the drip line. Ever how far that tree spreads, if you go out there and dig, that's where the roots are.
Okay.
And so it's always proportionate to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? All right, citizen, come on up. Both of you, come on up. Identify yourself and your address.
I certainly will. Jim Roberts, 2419 Lilly Field Drive here in Trophy Club. May please counsel. Couple of questions, is the development of area three contingent on the work being proposed in areas one and two? Okay. You see what I'm getting at?
I think the, I think area three came up because of if you were going to reduce parking. We were concerned about parking. And so if you took out parking spaces in area one or area two. Where do those people park? And one thought was that, well, you expand the baseball parking up at the top of the pitcher into area three. Or maybe you, at least my idea was you maybe take out the walking path and put it next to the, the fence or something. So you don't try to destroy all of the area three open space, but that's how it came up.
In other words, if we weren't, if we hadn't area one discussion and area two discussion, if that didn't exist, area three wouldn't be there.
It, it might have because we, in peak times, we run out of parking. Now, we have different parking problems along Parkview during peak events. Not just 4th of July or something like that, there are actually baseball events or like that that give us parking issues. And so we've been talking about how do we deal with additional parking anyway? But it became more needed if you took out some of that other parking.
Okay, that, that was just my question at this point.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
Jim, quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Which is your house? I apologize for not remembering.
And that's where I was going next, do you mind if I? I'm way out here in area we'll call four.
Okay.
So primarily, and, and you guys can address it as it comes up, it looks like there is a line item under area number three, landscape enhancement. Two sub B. I would guess that's where us outliers at area four get concerned.
Well, I did want to mention, because I could tell you guys were, your wheels were turning. There's other things that we discussed in the previous meeting that applies to the area directly behind where y'all live. That didn't rise to the level of requiring engineering input and we discussed some at, at the previous one, like trees and stuff like that, so. So there's other things in the works that no matter what happens with what's on the screen here. Still would positively affect what, what it is that you're talking about.
That's great. I, I can sit down, I just wanted to figure out how I can find what came out of the, it looks like a January 27, 15 meeting.
Yes.
Is where.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion there, we tried to narrow down, at least the motion was, give us some financial figures. Because we didn't know what some of the things we were talking about might cost. And we wanted those financial figures and so we went to the town engineer to try to help us with that. There are things that, that he didn't look at at all as we were talking about.
Yeah, and, and to answer, to try and answer your question and Stephen and Adam can probably clarify on this, but aside from the motion that we made to do this exercise, we did. We did ask that you guys at least look at cost estimates for some additional foliage in the area four, right?
Can I address as well, Ursula Roberts, 2419? My question is, and I know I've brought this up before, that I went back through emails and before we even bought our house. And I think my first message to Adam was in 2012. You're getting trees. And here we are, it's 15 and you guys are saying they're in the works, they're coming. And I guess what we would like to know is, one, what is the timeline? I mean, this is, this for us, we have, and, and that's what bothers me is we kind of feel like we trusted. The council and the city to do the right things and we have not been the squeaky wheel. And we're kind of regretting that somewhat. So that's our first question. Secondly, is if we were told in 2012 we were going to get these trees. When we get these trees, are they going to be the size that they would be if they were planted in 2012?
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll try to answer that a little bit. And Adam and, and Stephen, you could probably help. My understanding is when the previous council spent money over here, we did plant trees down on that end.
No, but here's what you did, is the squeaky wheels got the trees, the people you told.
Let them answer the question.
Sorry, okay.
Please. So Adam, were there any trees planted down behind their house and their next house?
There was the initial round, which some of those, there was a couple of them that died. What we said at the last meeting was that, and I've talked to Sue about this because she wanted to get with you at the same time I, I got with her Fitzgerald. So she's in process, in fact, we texted tonight. So at the last councilment, it was said that I would get with you as well to basically look behind your house, designate the trees. And bring a figure back to council, how much that would cost.
But my first text to you and many after were in 2012. So I understand you're saying we're in the works, but what I'm saying is that we were told this and we were actually told by the previous owners. That this had already been approved. So that was for us, so, so do you see more of my?
So, so let me ask the question again, I want a direct answer. In the last time that we bought trees in this entire area, did any trees go down at area four?
No.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get a direct.
Thank you.
Answer for, so. Your second part of your question was size of trees. So I think what you've heard tonight is that we were looking at pricing for larger trees. If you go back to the previous action, there was a dollar amount that was approved by council. And the town manager was instructed, go spend that dollar amount. And between the town manager, Adam and whoever, they decided how much money and what size things happened. I think this council, at least I am, I'll speak for myself. If we're going to plant more vegetation, let's make it of the size that it does some good. That's just my personal opinion, I don't know how the rest of these guys feel. So I'll just say it to you that way. And that's the reason you see at least in some of these items where it talks about six inch diameter trees. Is I don't want a two inch because a two inch isn't going to do me any good. And I recognize the bigger the tree, the faster we get help. And so I can't tell you that it would be the same size if we had planted it in 2012 to answer that question directly. But I can tell you we're going to try to make them bigger, but recognize. Because of drought conditions, if we don't irrigate them adequately, they're not going to grow that much. So that's just where we kind of are in that. So I appreciate your concern. So I can't tell you what. This is where it is after referring it to the park board to come back and study some of the issues. Some of those issues are being already addressed that deal with the Fitzgeralds.
And again, I live next door on the other side of Fitzgerald and they're being addressed, but we have not received one word and that's our frustration. As you guys keep saying, we're.
Yeah, but I, I think she's correct. We, we really never got to that, so we probably should address that tonight if we can.
Yeah, that's why, what I was trying to say earlier is we left that meeting, your name was said four times in that meeting. I've been on council for almost a year and no one has had the privilege of having their name said four times in one meeting. We're, we're working on it, we're trying to help you.
But maybe we address it tonight.
But we did not get to the point of taking action to spend money because we needed to know what and how much so that we could do that.
And one of, and one of the things that you'll see in your packet is one of the reasons why I had Tom kind of lay out the prices. Is that you have an idea of a six inch tree is about $2,500. You know, a four inch tree is a little bit less than that, you know, you can kind of go down. And then to do landscaping, which would include some additional evergreen type shrubs with irrigations around $2 a foot. So that starts giving you some pricing parameters as we look at the different areas, including the area by, by their home.
So Adam, in the park board where they looked at all of this and came to us with some recommendations. Did they specifically have recommendations in that area?
Her trees were included in that aggregate bid of trees that was on those documents.
And, and have you seen that document that talked about more trees in your area?
I have.
Okay, all right.
But again, I haven't gotten clear, it's vague at, at best.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I do believe.
Curse, the curse of government.
This would fall under tree mitigation, that would come out of those funds?
We would, we would use, we'd use all the ones we had, correct? I, that is, am I correcting that, Stephen? Yes.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And so Ms. Buck, did you have your hand up?
Usually embedded this time at seven months. Jean Buck, 2401 Lilly Field, can I use your mouse? Okay, so I guess, and thank you for providing a copy of the, the cost breakdown. I guess I'm just concerned, and I didn't make the 27th meeting, but I did have an opportunity to listen to it. I'm concerned because if you look at the properties, all of these properties. My home is here. And our home build line is closest to the park than any other home. And yet if you look at area one, the trees randomly stop right here. And I understand that there were two separate parking lots essentially that were built, one in I think 2004 and the other started in 2010. But the zoning that was applied to this entire area was changed on exactly the same date. So there should really be no difference in the way that you treat this house or that you treat this house. you treat this house, or this house, or this house. And with all due respect to my friends, the Roberts, love you as neighbors, we moved in as twenty, as of two thousand twelve. So what was here was here. And, and I'm not begrudging you more trees. I want you to have more trees. But I want more trees. And if I'm looking at area number one and area number two from a cost perspective, there's virtually no difference. I'd be willing to give you the five hundred dollar difference, just so I could get what area two is getting. The use of the parking lot has changed drastically in the five years since I moved in. And by that, what I mean is, yes, we have special events. We don't complain on those dates. Fourth of July is a great time here. I'm happy to let people use my backyard and look at the fireworks. What I'm concerned about is the day to day, we have Beck Elementary School now using this immediate area right here for pickup and drop off every single day, Monday through Friday, two fifteen to three fifteen every day. And it's loud. And we have kids that are climbing our walls. We have trash in our yards. We have baseballs that fly over our, our fence. This is my property, all of this down here too. But we're not putting any trees there. The noise travels, the trash travels, the kids travel. I know what I bought. I know what I got. I'm just asking you for to apply the solution effectively and accurately and fairly to every resident that lives along this line. That's all.
All right, thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Jensen, twenty two eighteen McLean Avenue. Jim and Ursula are friends of mine. With all due respect, they're not going to get what they want out of new trees. I have a forest behind my house. I can hear one fourteen clear as day. You could put a forest behind their house, they're still going to complain. This is a dead issue. Stop talking about it. They're not, there's nothing you can do that is going to make them happy, is my opinion. Trees are not going to solve the issue. They're not. It's my opinion.
All right, thank you, Eric. Okay, council, any other questions, Mr. Lamont?
A question, Ursula, is the trees for the, the noise, or is it just lights seeing the baseball field, just?
It's just a buffer from, and I think when you guys came and did the study, it was that we could actually see people on the, the field. And it was just a buffer. And again, to rebuff what Eric is saying, we have never complained about anything. We moved into our home knowing what we got. And we completely agree with that. We moved there in two thousand twelve. There was a baseball field. We love that. We have three kids. We use the path. We use everything there. The only thing that we're asking for is before we bought the house, the City of Trophy Club had said, you're getting a buffer of trees. We have never complained, as you guys know, you don't really know who we are. I know you've never seen him, and most of you have never seen me. So if you put in the trees, that's all we're asking for. We have never complained about anything. And really, we hate to complain about this. And that's what we're struggling with is, like I said, two thousand two we were told, or two thousand twelve, we were told we'd get them.
I was about to say, I wasn't here.
Did you?
Two thousand two.
You said you had emails and stuff. Were you given itemized list of, or a plan of what was gonna, what happened in two thousand twelve that never happened?
Not itemized, but I included all my emails and my correspondence in the study that was done.
I will, I will say, you know, Adam was pretty adamant about getting trees behind your house. So it.
And that's all we've asked for.
I, I, I don't want him, you to think that he didn't stand up for you. He was, last meeting, he was making sure that.
We, we love our street. We love where we live. Just a little buffer of trees would be perfect. That's it. That's all. Thank you.
Now, is, is this the, the item, plant trees across from field five on the slope? That's, that's what you're talking about?
The intention was, sir, from the slope, and then all the way behind their house, their house, that corner where it intersects right there near the field, when we did our light study, it is the brightest spot of the entire Royal Troon neighborhood.
Is their house the last one on this right, or is it across that sidewalk?
The Fitzgerald.
The Fitzgerald, or off the map, you're on the map. Okay.
Now, what you don't say in this is, is how many? You just say plant trees.
Well, there should have been a number, I thought, in the document. There should have been a number. That was the aggregate number. My plan was, if council approved it tonight, to meet with the Roberts and just literally walk with them, just like I have done with other residents, and bring back a specific number if you're just looking at their lot. That's.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and commenting. We appreciate that. I have had a request from one council member who wanted to get some legal advice and to take us into executive session. But before we do, it seems like that we also were agenda to deal with maybe some executive session questions on item sixteen. Is that?
Yes.
Also, Patricia, is that what we were after? And so council, one option is to table this item, move through fourteen and fifteen, and then maybe go into an executive session to get your legal advice and then come out. Does that seem like maybe a plan to do?
Good plan.
And Tom, that would allow y'all to leave. I think we, we appreciate what you've done, and that'll let you.
You're welcome.
Get out of here at a reasonable time before the snow comes and, or whatever that might happen tonight. We don't know.
That's right.
And I recognize that we've had some citizens scab, and I, I hate to make you wait to get a decision, but there are some legal advice. JR, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm here to listen.
Okay. All right. I would then entertain a motion to table item thirteen.
I'll make a motion to table item thirteen.
I'll second.
So I had a motion to table item thirteen by Councilmember Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. All those in favor of the motion to table, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No one opposed. We will table it and bring it back later for everybody. Item fourteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town repealing subsection three regulating administrative approval of a site plan, changes of section five dot oh nine B, changes to the site plan of section five dot oh nine site plan requirements of Article Five supplementary district regulations of chapter thirteen, zoning of the code of ordinances of the town, providing for the incorporation of premises, providing for an amendment, providing for a penalty not to exceed the sum of two thousand dollars for each offense, and providing an effective date. Stephen, do you want to comment?
Yes. Pull that up. I had Royal Troon up. Where are we at? Yes, mayor and council, this was an item that was brought up, I believe it was during the retreat session regarding the site plan requirements and discussion about the authority that staff has to approve certain site plan changes. And we brought that back to planning and zoning and had them discuss it. And now it's before you. And I think the, I think from, you know, P and Z's, and we obviously have the commissioner of that board here, is that perhaps rather than removing it entirely, and I'll give a couple of instances why that may not be a good idea, is that perhaps there's some triggers, or there's some specific guidelines that are used to when what triggers it coming back through. And the reason why removing it entirely is that when you go on site and you actually are under construction, there are times when what's on paper makes a lot of sense, but when you get in the field, it just doesn't work. Maybe there's a valve there, or maybe there's a, something that doesn't happen. You got to move a sidewalk, or, you know, the building needs to be six inches this way. Or there's always those types of deals that happen that if you would require them to go back, get on a P and Z agenda, and then go to a council agenda, they would never, ever finish construction. Time is money in that world. However, at the same time, I think that there are some instances where perhaps there was too great of latitude provided. And there were some decisions that were made that perhaps should not have been made. And I don't believe that that, you know, looking at the facade, changing a total facade look, maybe that was too broad of a stroke to be able to make administratively. However, maybe there is, you know, if they can't get a pecan tree or an oak tree because they're not around, or they're all sick or something, and they want to replace it with an approved tree of a maple, you know, maybe that works rather than coming and bringing it back. Those are kind of my general comments and thoughts as kind of an introduction to this item, and, and welcome to help answer any questions you may have.
And so did P and Z have some comments about it? Did you want to make any?
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Crest Court, chairman of the planting and zoning. One of the things, the P and Z was mixed on their discussion. There were some that just wanted to say this item had been abused and do away with it, just eliminate it. There was other discussions on how to word some type of restriction. For example, some of the cities of which you've seen, you have, you have in your packet, used the word minor. Well, there's no definition of minor. And, you know, what's, so we had a discussion over how to draft some language that would be clear. And we could not come up with some. And staff, at that time, didn't feel it was their point to come up with some. The vote was, at that time, I believe, the vote was four in favor and one was opposed to just eliminating it totally. But how to word it is, was part of the discussion that we had.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. So let's get some comments to help us guide along this. And so Lamont, Rowe, myself, and I don't, and Phillip, and maybe everybody, but okay.
I went to the P and Z meeting, and I, I think the way it's, actually not worded here, it's eliminated, I think it's too restrictive. I made a proposal, we could toss it around, that if they do make changes, to send a copy to the mayor, town manager, and chairman of the P and Z. And if there's any issues, then they could go back to the planning and zoning coordinator and bring it before P and Z, something like that. I think we need a dialogue. We need to do something where we don't handcuff their, handcuff them. Because right now, you've eliminated, they can't do anything.
All right, Ryland?
I just wanted to clarify for everyone's, setting the table for the discussion, that the four to one vote of the P and Z to eliminate this, this section here basically would mean that any and all changes at any, of any level of detail would need to run back through the approval process, basically. That, that said, I think that Greg is kind of leaning on the right path. I think the, the, the thing for me is, I don't, I don't want to be hung up on that level of detail. But it's good to know when it's happening so that you can have some idea of whether or not there is a level of comfort or lack of comfort. So what the right process is, probably, Stephen, you probably should be the one to propose a process to us if, if, if Greg's process is, needs a little tweaking, or if you like it, tell us you like it. But I think that that general air direction is the right way to go. I certainly don't want to, I don't want to make it prohibitively difficult to make minor site plan changes.
All right. I agree with what Ryland is saying and the direction that Greg is going. I don't want to eliminate the whole paragraph or section. I think there needs to be a way to accomplish some of those things. Maybe there were some decisions made that should have been handled differently. I'm, I like Ryland is saying, I'm not sure what the best solution is either. I think in Greg's suggestion of mayor, town manager, P and Z chairman, I'm not sure that that's quite broad enough, only because I see myself in a situation where I'm making a decision that's maybe not informed about how everybody feels. And so that's where I have the concern of it being placed upon the seat of the mayor. But I recognize that's difficult to expand too far, but maybe, maybe there is a way to, to have a good balance, to get enough opinions that we deal with it. I don't know that it's good practice to say, okay, here's an exception. P and Z mayor and town manager agree to make the exception, and an email goes out to council that says, if there's no objection within forty eight hours, we're going to move forward. I don't know that's acceptable either to everybody. But, but somehow I think it needs to be better controlled and better informed. Phillip?
And I don't, I don't disagree. You know, I've kind of gone back and forth on this. I think, I think the whole process was a, there were a lot of things done, or a lot of things not done. But the major thing was what Stephen said. And I think that was the only decision that was changed, perhaps. I don't know if there were others. But it was interesting, today, of all things, I listened to, I got on SoundCloud and listened to ZBA meeting, which I, I didn't realize that there were two, two items that were, that came before ZBA. And one of them was, there's, there was a house in the Highlands that certain lots, you can, you can only have so much percentage of your house cover the lot. And it depends on the size of the lot. And so the, the guy's house was built, and when they built it, his lot said only forty percent could be, the house could occupy the lot. When they built it, they built it at forty four percent. So he wanted to add a.
Covered patio.
Covered patio, which would take it to forty eight percent. So he had to go, so he went to the town, and the town denied it. Said that you're above, you know, your percentage. And so he had to go to ZBA to get approval. And so in my mind, four percent seems minor, you know? It doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it was denied. And it had to go through the process. And so, so I, I'm really at a conflict on what Dennis has said, what's minor, what's not minor? Do we want to run everything through a forty eight hour thing of council? So I, I think that's, that's a tough decision. I agree. It's what, where do we want to go on this? I don't think that, that every little thing needs to come to us. You know, I, I agree that the staff needs flexibility on that. But it's, it's what level of comfort are we willing to?
And, and I think Councilmember Schaffner hits a, hits the nail on the head, is about comfort. And that, and that, to me, equates to trust. And, you know, with that particular development, I would say that we did, we could do better. But I would also say that for the other ninety eight percent of the projects that happened to town, that doesn't happen. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to clarifying. I actually really like what Southlake has done. If you've looked at their, their items there about minor changes, and it's, you know, they go in, if it doesn't change the character of the development, if they don't, it doesn't increase the ratio of gross floor area in the structures of any lot, it doesn't change the intensity of the use. Those types of items, I think, are, they're good because it's talking about the big picture of what you guys are talking about, and what you, you want to preserve the integrity of what that plan is and what was brought before P and Z and council. You know, whether or not a sidewalk needs to move six inches this way doesn't really change the integrity of, of the development. It's just something that sometimes has to happen in the field. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm looking, is maybe looking at some of their provisions and applying those within the zoning ordinance. And I think that would be a good, happy medium between making sure that we're communicating with the council and the P and Z about what's happening, as well as being able to be efficient in the field. And, you know, if there are some major items, you know, those are things that I like to talk to you guys about, that we're experiencing as we go through, you know, when I give updates to you guys, is, hey, this particular development, we've had a problem with this issue. I just want to bring it to your attention. You know, it may have to come back, or we may be able to work through a solution.
I think part of our reaction here is there were exceptions made on several projects, one of which was medical office building, I think. And it changed the aesthetics, and I think the exterior and other issues that, that brought council member concern.
That's right.
So it rose, it kind of rose to the top for us. And then you go back to some exceptions made, maybe dealing with what we're dealing with today of Royal Troon. And you say, how do we draft something to make sure that we're aware? And, you know, you updating us in your report, saying something about them is great. And then if we have an objection or a question, we ask it, and that'll tell you something about. about council's reaction. But if you don't update us-
Right.
-it is a communication issue, and I think that's a little bit of what I felt like when we were dealing with the medical office building and such. There was no communications.
Happened.
And had there been communications, and I didn't say anything, then I don't have anybody to blame but myself, maybe. But I don't feel like I understand all of those aspects, and therefore, that was the reason I was hesitant to say that I was going to be part of that decision-making, because I don't have all that expertise that maybe somebody else has. So-
Let me ask this. Is there a way to craft that approval process that perhaps doesn't have to go through P&amp;Z to council? I mean, is there, is there a better, is there a different method that we can utilize that perhaps fast-tracks it, but still gets an approval process, other than what seems to be one staff person?
DRC, Stephen? DRC, maybe?
The reality, the reality is, is that you're really dealing with the building inspector, and there are items that come forward with, you know, that, that for the most part, aren't what I would consider major issues. You're talking about, you know, the way the flowerbed goes, and it, and it's supposed to be five and a half feet, and, you know, because of the way that the site is, you've got to make the drive approach, and so it's only like four feet, or it's five. Is that a substantial change? You know, in my opinion, it's not. It's the integrity of the site is still being done. Now, if they wanted to eliminate that completely, then I would say, hey, you know, maybe that's changed, and that's where it would trigger maybe going through some type of review with, you know, from a staff perspective. I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm willing to work on that, though.
What were the initials that Patricia was referencing?
Development Review Committee, which is an internal committee that we use to look at projects and how they, everything from police, fire, planning, inspections, you name it, you know, utilities, things like that.
I mean, I don't want to handcuff their ability, but also, I, I think that it needs to be bigger than one person being able to make a decision. That's all I'm getting at. And I don't know who made the decision. I tried to get to the bottom of it. It looks like one person, but it could have been more, I don't know.
All right, Mr. Lamont, and-
Is not, does not the building inspector report to the P&amp;Z coordinator? So you sort of have a conflict, it's really not checks and balances?
Yeah, the, the building inspector is either going to be Tommy or Pat, and generally speaking, if there's an issue there, they're going to bring it to, you know, Matt would have worked with them on it, or they'd come to me, and we will work on that particular item and say, okay, what, what makes sense? For example, let's say the, the, you know, the, the stone brick on the, on the medical office building, you know? I told them that, okay, we'll, we'll let you slide on that, but I want the stone on there, and I want it done, you know, by this date. Or the shrub saying, okay, I'll, I'll give you till March to get those in because of planning season and things like that. You know, that, that's where they come to me and go, okay, what, give me some direction, and that's, that's where it kind of comes from.
But I can see where the building inspector goes out to the building and sees, oh, wait, there's canopies there, there should have been an entranceway, goes back to the P&amp;Z coordinator, oh, no, no, that, that was changed, it's approved, done, that's it. Who else does he go to?
Well-
I mean, it's the checks and balances, I mean-
Yeah, and, and, and it, it's hard to maybe articulate the way, it doesn't operate, I mean, that's kind of a vacuum type of deal. You know, everybody wants to do a really good job, and everybody wants to do what was done, and they're very conscientious about that. You know, what I can say is, and, you know, regarding the medical office building, is that staff made some mistakes, and, you know, I, I would hope that, you know, one development doesn't paint the broad brush that, that we're incapable. You know, we've, we've talked to, I've talked at length with them about being better, and, you know, I would say that the other developments, as you, as you've seen them in town, you don't have those issues. You know, if you pulled up the site plan of the Commons or of the Holiday Inn, you're going to see what was done. And so, again, that's why I, I would hope that, you know, we're talking about comfort, we're talking about trust, we're talking about communication, and, you know, I'm, I would be in favor of adding some language that talks about some of these items, about does it change the integrity, does it change the facade in a, in a meaningful way, does it, I mean, in other words, are you changing the colors? Are you changing the stone? Are you, you know, are you moving it from stone to brick? The floor area, you know, are you changing the parking lot? Those types of things, I would say, that's where it would need to go back, and that it's my job to keep you guys informed.
Councilmember Reed.
So, I believe there's a simple solution, and maybe it's not, but this is truly an issue of trust. Like, kids break a rule, you go, oh, you're going to have to live under some tighter restrictions before I trust you again. And that's simply what this is. There was a mistake made, and so the trust that's been given has been broken. My suggestion would be this. When the inspectors go out, we have a simple form. If there's any change, they make a note, or if there's a request for a change, they make a note, and that has to be signed by the town manager and placed in the file. At that point, we know who approved it, we know that it's been brought to the town manager's attention. The town manager updates us once a week and communicates with us. Now, could something slide through? Sure. But would there be an accountability chain? Absolutely. And would there be an opportunity at that point to say, inspector's brought me a change, I think it's significant enough to put it in a report or put it on a meeting, and then it can be addressed? I think it's a simple form that's just filled out. Town manager always has to sign it. If there's any changes other than the town manager, then we've got a problem with our inspector. It's done. We've got accountability, we've got reporting, and we give a little bit of trust back, and I don't know. I think that's just a simple way to fix it. We don't have to worry about language, it's just a form we develop.
Councilmember Perrow.
Going along with what Councilmember Reed just said, since we are in an electronic age, and typically, I would think, most times, there'll be at least four councilmen who are going to be available online at some point in time through the course of the day. Maybe the suggested 48-hour window might be a value to consider, whereas in the case of the MOB, we had a structural change, and a four-foot setback disappeared, the canopy reappeared instead. If that went out to all the council, and you got four councilmen coming back to you, which is a voteable majority, and saying, hey, that's okay, we'll buy into that, you've looked at it, the inspectors looked at it-
Can't do that.
-maybe that would be sufficient to give you a sense, as a town manager, that you had support from a number of council people.
Let me, if, if we were, if this were, I don't know, a year ago, whenever that came forward, I would have sat down with the developer, and I would have said, what you're proposing is a significant change. You're, if someone holds the plan up that you're proposing, and you go out there and build it, and you'd look at it this way, you're going to see something different. And at that point, I would have told the developer, you know, what you're asking for is too much, and I'm going to take it before P&amp;Z for an amendment into, to the town council. You know, if they wanted to, if they wanted to swap out their, their roses for something else, I might say, okay, what's the reasoning behind it? And then, depending on if that's a sensitive issue or not, maybe like as Councilmember Reed suggested, I sign off on it, and I let you know that, hey, they've, there's been a request for this, I don't have a huge issue with this, and this is the direction I'm going to take it.
I agree. So, before I go to Tim, I just was going to comment. I really like the suggestion that Councilmember Reed offered. It is a trust issue, and learning to communicate. And so the thought hit me as, as he was talking was, if Stephen was our town manager permanently, and Stephen communicated about building issues the way he communicates about everything else, there wouldn't have been a problem.
And we're going to know.
Because communication is there. To Jim's comment, Patricia was smiling over there, and I was already getting ready to say, you can't do the four distribution by email and see what people think. You've created a walking quorum, and you haven't discussed it in an open session. So you can't do that, but, but some way of informing council, and if there's an issue, it's brought to the attention of the town manager, and the town manager then can deal with how he's going to deal with it, an agenda to, to deal with it appropriately. So Tim, and then Ryland, I think.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'll reiterate, I think, I want to move this along. I think what Garrett said was perfect. I think it's a trust issue. I think we trust Stephen. I think the staff will be accountable to Stephen, and he'll tell us what we need to know. And instead of just keep debating it all night, let's push it along, I guess is what I was trying to say.
So then, to that end, I would like to make a motion that we defer action on modifying the portion of our code of ordinances that's currently before us, subject to a new staff recommendation based on the debate we've had tonight.
All right, state that again.
Move to defer, move to defer this item, not take any action against the code of ordinances, subject to a new staff recommendation on the item, based on what was discussed tonight. I'll second it, but I'm not going to repeat.
Yeah, he made a motion. Subject to a new recommendation from staff-
A new staff recommendation.
New staff recommendation was the end of that, okay. So I have a motion by Rowe, seconded by Schaffner. Any discussion? All right, so before I call for the vote, I did like the idea of Stephen maybe looking at other towns to see how they worded this exception, and I think that's encompassed as what Ryland is saying, is bring back a recommendation, and I liked that idea as a guidance. So, any other comment before we vote? All right, no other comment, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. So I think you got that on tape good. Holly, at least, he was speaking to the microphone, so we should be able to get that motion good. All right. Considering to take appropriate action regarding a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2012-08, Resolution Number 2013-15, and Resolution 2014-33, and adopting a resolution approving a new Town of Trophy Club handbook for elected and appointed officials and providing an effective date. So I think, before we get into the meat of these, I just want to make a statement. There was some, there was a decision that I made that brought this back and took it off consent agenda, and I went back and listened to the tape of the statement that I made that said we would put it on the consent agenda, and I said, council, if you have any changes that you want to submit, you need to get them to the staff so that we have enough time to pull it from this consent agenda. And that was the direction, there wasn't a motion to, to do that, that was the direction. And so, what happened is, in fact, Councilmember Perrow had a change that he felt like he never got a chance to really debate the issue. And I said to him, well, put together your wording, submit it, we'll deal with it appropriately. And so it's before you now, at least the significant part of that, is on page 170 of the packet. The rest of the changes, pretty much, is what Patricia, Holly, and Stephen went through and tried to put into the document everything we suggested. Is that a true statement? So really, I think 170 is really the only place we have a significant change. Is that true? All right. So let's deal with the change on 170. It, it's highlighted in yellow, and there's, are parts of it in yellow, there's an option one, which was the changes proposed that we all agreed to. Is that right? Am I stating that right?
I, I got a question before we get into this.
Okay.
Did we non-approve the handbook with minor modifications, like putting a president in next to chairman? Was it approved with option A or one?
No.
And we're now just looking at it again?
No, sir.
It was not approved. It was not voted upon. I just want to make sure. I went back and listened to the tape.
But it was said to put on consent.
That's right. But it also said, if you listen to that, I'd be happy to play it for you. I have a snippet.
I listened to it three or four times.
And it said specifically, that if council has any changes, get them to staff in enough time that we can pull it from consent. So that was the statement. And Mr. Perrow did that. So that was the decision. So whether you liked it or not, this is where we are.
I have a point of clarification.
All right. So there was no action taken. So, option one was what we all kind of agreed to was the deal. Option two is what Jim wanted to discuss. And, so Jim, I'll let you kind of talk to that, the spirit of that change, and so they can hear why you brought that forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray. First, let me thank the council members who provided their input to make the changes and the revisions to the handbook for appointed elected officials, to get a bang-up job. And I'm in total agreement with all the changes, except for one statement that I believe after the council workshop needed some more directed discussion before the final vote to adopt. Option one of the proposed handbook for appointed elected officials, which is page three of nine or 170 of our packet, under Town Council Appointment Committee, has a provision to be exclusive by giving this committee the discretion to add or not an ex-officio member, which could include, since it is non-specific, a president, a chairman, or a member of a board, or commission, or corporation, as the council deems appropriate, from the interview process for a volunteer who'd be serving on that board, commission, or corporation, that these individuals oversee and/or serve on. And when I looked at the new mission responsibilities and principles as proposed during our retreat on January 23rd and 24th, under the responsibility section, one of the points we raised was to collaborate with the Trophy Club, MUD, and other government entities, which I believe would include boards, commissions, and corporations. The potential to exclude a president, chairman, or member of one of these boards or commissions would suggest less than a collaborative process. Secondly, under principles, it also states that we would provide a limited government with maximum transparency. If the council chooses to exercise its right, or this committee chooses to exercise its right to exclude a chair, a president, or a member of a corporation from that interview process, under option one is stated, I do not feel we'd be meeting the maximum transparency standard that we agreed to set as one of our principles going forward. And thirdly, under principles, it also states that we are to remain accountable and responsive to residents, businesses, and property owners with emphasis on proactive communication and problem solving. Each of the residents who volunteer to give their time and energy to the board, commission, or corporation upon which they serve are no less deserving of proactive communication we are committing to, which I don't believe can be accomplished if we chose to exclude any one of them from the interview process who would be serving on the board, the commission or corporation they oversee and serve on. Such action, in my humble opinion, would only serve to hinder proactive communication with these resident volunteers. And that's the reasoning behind my proposing option two, to allow one member, either president, chairperson, or a member of a board-commissional corporation, to join as an ex-officio party in the interview process under discussion this evening.
All right. So, so council, you have a couple of options here that might move us forward. One is that somebody could make a motion to approve the new handbook based on the proposed changes, including option one. Or someone could make a motion to say, all the changes but with option two. And even if they're either one of those motions, someone could make a motion to amend that could cause the debate between option one and option two. The other option is that you could just make a motion that says, I want the handbook to include option one, and that creates the debate so that everybody can comment upon it. So before we just start getting comments, let's, let's try to direct it as to where you would like to go. like to go. So Councilmember Roe, you had your hand up.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion repealing Resolution Number 2012-08, Number 2013-15, and Number 2014-33, adopting a new resolution approving a new Town of Trophy Club handbook for elected and appointed officials, and utilizing option one as presented in the draft in the packet.
Second. Alright, so we have a motion by Councilmember Roe, a second by Councilmember Schaffner. Motion to approve the proposed handbook changes utilizing option one, as presented before us. Alright, any discussion?
Yeah, since I made the motion, I'll just go ahead and say why I support option one. The only reason I do is because the intent of option one basically mirrors option two, but it does not limit option, limit us in the way option two does, in the sense that additional non-voting ex officio members can be added at the discretion of council, and not just one. And I think also, we might even foresee, you know, a future, a future scenario where maybe a staff liaison might even be included in those discussions, or something like that. The overall intention of the change to this process was to reemphasize where the responsibility lies. I mean, we all discussed this at the, I think at the retreat was the first time that we brought this up, was that, you know, last year's round of appointments, all the interviews went through, all the recommendations were made by the various boards and commissions, and out of, you know, 20-some-odd recommendations, three were changed, and that created a big uproar amongst the folks that had done the interviewing. They didn't appreciate those three. And if that's gonna be the case, then I think it's important to emphasize that we're gonna be 100% accountable and 100% responsible. I disagree with Councilman Perro's assertion that members of boards and commissions are supervised in some way, I forget what the exact word you used, I should've written it down, by a president or chair. You know, the various duties of chairs or presidents are different from board to board, depending on how the board was established, but, you know, generally, what we're looking for a chair to do is running a good meeting and, you know, contributing at that type of level, and it's not a, it's not a situation where the rest of the members report to the chair. All members are appointed at our level by council. So, while I think having, if someone's worthy of being a chair of a board, I'm probably gonna be very interested in knowing what their opinion is, and I'm gonna want them to be in an interview process, most likely. However, I just don't wanna have it completely 100% codified, that I have to do that every single time, because it might make sense to have two people. It might make sense, logistically, to not have anyone. So that's why I support option one.
Alright, anybody else wish to comment?
And I agree with Ryland. Option one, to me, is more inclusive, because it allows the board to choose whoever they may want. They may wanna choose the town manager, they may wanna choose whoever. Option two is exclusive, because you're only saying one. That's why I agree with Ryland on this.
One observation I had, as I compared them, was that option one left to the discretion of the group, how many non-voting ex officio members to include, and who to include. And although, I thought it was good wording to say, "However, a chair, president, member may not participate in the position under consideration in his or her position on the board, commissioner..." I think you'd probably just make a decision that you wouldn't do that anyway. Although it wasn't a bad suggestion to document it, probably inappropriate to include the chair when you're discussing the appointment of the chair. So that would kinda be it. So, I would support option one and the motion also. Any other comments?
Yeah, my only, again, my only concern was that the option also exists, while of course you can expand and have two, or three, or 10, or whatever, in option one, it also gives this committee the right to tell a chair, or a head of a board, that you're not invited. And even though this person being interviewed will be serving under their oversight, the possibility exists, the way option one is written, to exclude that individual, president or chair, from the interview process, and that was my only concern. I'm not trying to limit it to just one, we could certainly, a minimum of just one, or whatever. I'm just trying to make sure those volunteers know that their opinions matter, that their service matters, and that they, if they want to attend, will not be excluded at the discretion of the committee. That's my only point.
Okay.
I'll just point out that I think that, I think that what both Ryland and Philip have said doesn't make them not matter. I really believe it actually gives the ability for us to make the decision to make more voices matter, or us to be able to pivot and make sure that the right person to help make the decision at that time is there. I think it doesn't hamstring us. So, I guess I don't necessarily agree with the comment of that it doesn't matter. So anyway, I support the motion, and I think Ryland.
Alright, so I just have a question of clarification, as I'm thinking about this being implemented. You have this subcommittee, existing of the mayor and two council members. If you approve this, you could either, you probably couldn't do it tonight, but we could put on a future agenda to name the two people, because we didn't really, I think, agenda to where we would do that. So we'd have to come back to name the two council members. What's missing is a little bit, how does it work? Whose responsibility is it to make all of this happen? Pull those people together, decide an ex officio? You don't have to document that, but I'm just thinking through this to say, alright, who organizes it, who runs it, that kinda thing. And you could name that later, it's not specific here, so you could deal with that when you form the committee.
We are specific on when it forms, is in June.
Right.
So I don't think that we have anything coming before us, so I think that we can carry that to June.
Till June, and then make appointments.
Right, right after the election.
Any objection to waiting till June to deal with it?
If we have a vacancy or something, we can always act sooner to make it happen, I guess.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, so all those in favor of the motion to approve repealing these resolutions and creating a new resolution for the handbook with all the changes that have been presented tonight with option one, show your hand. All opposed, same sign. There's one opposed with Perro, everyone else voted in favor. It does pass, at a 6-1 vote. So I think, before we consider item 16, y'all help me here, that we would probably go into executive session unless you wanna deal with 17, 18, and 19 before we go into executive session. What do you wanna do?
Well, they're kinda quick, I would think, right?
Alright, so if there's no objection, let's deal with item 17, Town Council Liaison Updates, Discussion of Same Park and Recreation Board, February 16, 2015. Councilmember Schaffner is the liaison. Philip?
Actually, on that, I think there was really one agenda item, and that was the formation of a subcommittee for looking at the dog park. And I will say, one thing that concerns me is that when we, when they have these subcommittees, there's not a lot of participation, you know. Something to keep in mind, subcommittee, when you are picking people, there's just not a lot of participation. I mean, they got, there's 11 people on Parks Board, and two people raised their hand to participate, and actually, one, and I think they actually got somebody later. So anyway, that's just something as a side note that kinda concerns me on that end of things. Also, one thing that maybe Adam or Stephen can send to all of council was the, kind of, that park guide.
Sure.
That we receive, or they received that night, which is kind of a, what is that, Adam?
It's the annual program guide, so it includes all our swim lessons, all our events. We do it every year.
And I think it was a rough draft, correct?
It was about 80%.
Yeah, and it would be good, I think it would be good for council to have, because I thought it was, well, you know, very informative, so.
It's a brochure that we do in-house, we design it, put it together. And it was nice. Kinda gives all the activities that are coming up over the next few months.
So it may be something you just send.
I thought it was nice. Absolutely, we'll send that out to you. It was well done.
Alright. Any questions about that report? Alright, hearing?
And let me just, they did form the subcommittee, and they also included the animal shelter board, or they invited members, and I think they've got a pretty good group.
So who's on the committee, do you know?
I know that Dave Abdolkey is the chair, and then Dave Stout is on it, and Susan Edstrom, and...
There are five members, so...
I don't know the other two.
Betty Dolins, and I can't remember the other one's name, but it's five.
And they're gonna, Kelly's gonna be included in that, correct? As part of that discussion, and the chief? Or just you?
Okay. Alright, good, thank you, appreciate that. Alright, item 18, Acting Town Manager Sidel's Update Regarding the Following Counsel Discussion and Input Regarding Same Denton County Days, Indian Creek Investigating Against Distracted Driving. Stephen?
Well, Denton County Days, I don't have a report, because I opted to not travel to Austin on Sunday night or Monday, in anticipation of the weather. I think that was a good choice, because not only did we have issues, Austin also had some issues, I know, this morning with some weather on the bridges. So, wanted to make sure I was here for the night. So regarding Indian Creek, we were hoping last week to have all the main lanes done, but they, as I know, Councilmember Schaffner knows, and others that live in that area, that they had a piece of equipment break, and that kinda slowed them down, and getting things poured. Now we've got the weather. So, it's all weather contingent, but right now, they have concrete scheduled for next Wednesday to finish the main lanes, and also finish out some of the driveways along there. We'll know a little bit more towards the end of this week. Edgemere took the brunt of the traffic, and it was, it was not ideal for a lot of different reasons. Also, the box, they've poured three of the walls, they've got two more to go, and then they've got to pour the top on the box culvert, and then they'll install the gabions then on the south side of the creek. And so, they're making good progress. I was talking to Ed last week, kind of, you know, they've got over a year to do this, but kind of, where do we think paving? And we think that everything will be done, hopefully towards the end of March, first part of April, that they would at least have the driveways done, all the main paving completed by then. And then they'd be working on the medians and getting the landscaping, some of that soft stuff. So, you know, some of the hardest parts of construction with the concrete going in, that will be wrapping up here pretty soon, in the next few weeks. But then we'll still have some closures, as they do punch list items, as they do the medians and install that. So, there'll still be construction in there, but it won't be as intensive as it has been in the past six, seven, eight months or so. So we appreciate everybody's patience, and know that, as Mayor Pro Tem Lamont said, it's progress. So, we'll get there. Regarding distracted drivers, this is a campaign that the police has been actively promoting, as well as April Ryling, trying to, especially in school zones, to pay attention. Put your phone down, don't talk on it, don't text, don't read your emails. I know that's a really hard thing to do, but it's kind of a, hit 'em from all sides, from putting it on marquees, to doing it on the website, Facebook, postcards. I know Lieutenant Shields has been active in this, and so, we just want people to pay attention to it, especially those folks who are traveling in school zones with children nearby, to just put the phone down for a few minutes, and make our town a little bit safer. Chief, you ain't wanna add anything?
No.
Okay.
It's gone really well.
I picked the day that you had the construction breakdown on Indian Creek to be my day that I drove it. Once a week, I make it an effort to either go home that way, or leave for work that day. Well, I decided to leave for work that day, and as I went down Edgemere, and the guy with the concrete truck decided to spray off his concrete onto my car, I thought what a mistake it was that I had made to go out that way, and wondered how long it would be before I had a phone call from Philip about that. And he didn't call me, so it was, turned out to be better.
He was getting the concrete out of his grass.
Yeah, anyway. Yeah, no, let me tell ya, it was quite a zoo. They were, concrete trucks trying to come in, trying to go out, people trying to get through. Oh, I'm telling ya.
Act like a man.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Stephen. Alright, item 19, Items for Future Agenda, I'll call your attention to page 185 of the packet. Do we have any items we need to remove or change, and does anybody have an item they wanna add? You had an item that was mentioned earlier, which was item three, that we're gonna wait till we get a planner before that comes back. Anything else? Alright, hearing none. There were no items in Items for Future Agenda. Alright, council, at this point, I'm gonna take us into executive session, we'll get some advice, and we'll come back and deal with actions related to those items where we're gonna get some advice. Item 20, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Subchapter 551 Texas Opens Meeting Act, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. A, Section 551.074A1, Personnel Matters, to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee pursuant to Section 551.074A1 of the Texas Open Meeting Acts, Act, Acting Town Manager Stephen Sidel, and vacant town manager position. Item B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation in open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, potential sites for the location of a new police and town hall facility, annex building, and potential lease of property. Section C, or item C, Section 551.0712, Consultation with Attorney, to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with Open Meetings Act, zoning and land use regulations, and regulation of signage. It is 9:30, we are in executive session, and take a short recess. Okay, tell me when. Council will come to order. It is 11:27, and we will reconvene into regular session. We're gonna go ahead and deal with item 21, and after that, we will go back to item 13 and item 16. Item 21, Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Executive Session Items. Chair would recognize, Garrett Reed for a motion.
I make a motion that we instruct Stephen to order surveys and appraisals on the two pieces of land discussed in the executive session tonight, as well as submit offers to both owners of the pieces of land we discussed tonight, not to exceed the numbers that we discussed tonight.
Second that vague motion.
Motion been made by Garrett Reed, seconded by Tim Kurtz, authorizing the town manager to proceed with surveys and appraisals on pieces of land that were discussed in the executive session, and not to exceed the dollar amounts that were discussed. Any other discussion about the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. Alright, the chair would recognize someone for another motion. Is Garrett gonna make that one? Is Garrett gonna make that one?
Which one?
Sure, on A?
Yes.
Yes, on A.
I make a motion that we confirm our decision in executive session to extend an offer to Stephen to be the town manager, pending a meeting on Monday morning to further negotiate his contract.
Finalize?
Finalize his contract.
It'll be March the second.
March the second.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Garrett Reed, seconded by Greg Lamont, that we're confirming our decision offering the job of permanent town manager to acting town manager Stephen Sidel, uh, based on discussion that we had, and that we will reconvene, or we'll hold a council meeting on March the second, special session, beginning at eight AM to finalize terms of that contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous.
Please.
I looked up and nobody was clapping, I don't know where it came from. All right, um... So we are gonna go back to item number thirteen. Discuss, study, design options provided by the town engineer for additional buffering or Royal Troon neighborhood adjacent to Independence Park, and the pool complex per town council action taken on January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the same. Council?
I'll make another motion.
Oh, wait just a minute. I need a motion to remove it from the table first.
Make a motion to remove item number thirteen from the table.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to remove item thirteen from the table. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous, it is back before us, all right? Council, you may discuss thirteen.
Uh, let me make a motion, if I get a second, then I think we can discuss. Uh, the motion I would like to make, uh, in regards to item thirteen is that the actions that we took in the last council meeting, um, that were recommended to us by the parks board are the actions that we've taken on this particular issue.
I'll second.
So are you proposing?
So we have a second, uh...
Got a second.
Motion by Reed, a second by Paro. Can you restate it and make sure we got it good?
Yeah, so my, my motion is that the actions that we took at the last city council meeting, we took action on some of the recommendations that the park board had given, that those are the actions that we're gonna take, and no further action will be taken.
Are the actions taken and no further?
I'd like to make an amendment to that. Can I do that?
All right, so I have a motion to amend, go ahead.
I believe, um, I want to make an amendment that we provide the trees that we spoke about for Ursula Roberts.
Roberts.
Roberts, uh, that I believe we were going to pass last meeting, but we, we tabled, so I'd like to add that.
I'm okay with that.
I'll second.
So, uh, are you including, um, Roberts and Fitzgerald, or just Roberts? I want to make sure we're clear.
That area, I believe it was two separate sections.
Are we clear?
Fitzgerald is right next door, right?
Mine are...
So did I have a second, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I seconded.
All right.
I, I'd like to, um, hear from Adam about what he under, how he understand, how he understood that direction coming out of last meeting, because we did talk about it last meeting. And the way I interpret Councilman Kurtz's motion is that we would simply move to approve following through to execute that direction, but let's, I guess if there's any questions about what the scope of that is, let's, let's nail that down.
Counsel, I just need to make sure here. So, um, the, the, the trees, are we talking the trees just for back there? Because the trees on the park board thing were to basically, it would be the Fitzgerald area, and it would be up near, um, the Bucks as well, at the front end of the parking lot. I, I don't, don't know which...
No.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, what you have, um, you have a section that's just, that says general.
Right.
And it says planting thirty-one more trees for twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. So is that everything? That's from Parkview all the way?
Tip to toe, what's missing?
For how much money, thirty-one trees for how much?
Twenty-two thousand seven fifty-four.
Before we dismiss that out of hand in favor of the specificity?
All right, just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so the motion I have is, um, to provide the trees for the Roberts. So that's the motion in the second. That's not what was just described, and so if the mover and second wants to agree to modify that amendment, we'll do that, or we'll deal with your amendment just as it stands.
I'd like to keep it as it stands.
All right. All right, so unless the mover wanted to change it, you don't get a choice. So, the amendment to the motion is to include, uh, the providing of trees behind the Roberts.
So, can I? I can ask a question of Adam, right?
Absolutely.
So, earlier, you had stated that she was supposed to get trees, and she was, with, she did not get trees behind her house. Was there somebody else who did not?
She, she, if you go to her house today, she has trees. She, she has trees today. There's additional buffering we could have done, there was some space we did not utilize near her house to plant trees. Because when we did the original analysis, her house was the most affected measurably, it wasn't subjective, it was objective, by light. It's the brightest house in the entire, the entire section of Royal Troon.
Didn't you also say that some of the trees behind their house specifically had died?
Yes, sir.
And that was one of the reasons, I thought.
Poisoned.
Yeah.
Um, guesstimate, how many trees are we talking about?
Probably about six, I would guess. And, uh, the second part of that question was, was there another house like hers? Like, what she stated and what you had actually said was she did not get trees. I mean, you, that's what you happened to state, so was, was there another home who did not get trees also? Or was she the only one who was somehow left out?
Out of that area, she was the only one that, that, that didn't really get additional trees that was said she would.
Okay.
All right, so let me clarify, because I think we have a confusion here. The original motion was to, uh, basically execute what was decided at the last council meeting, which my understanding was to include the item that Philip just read, which was the thirty-one trees for twenty-two seven fifty-four.
No, I don't think so.
No?
No, I never got to that.
It was the, the additional light shields, the bollards on the sidewalk, and cutting the curb, and I think there was a decorative rock.
It was, it was the, I, I can tell you what, it's the, exactly what you said. It's the push buttons on the poles, additional light shields. It was the, um, bollards in the walkway near Sue Fitzgerald's. It was the cutting of a sidewalk ramp, and then we're gonna put some hedges and a rock there, and that was the only, that was the only direction I believe I received at the last meeting, and we're in process on that.
All right, so...
Can I, um...
Yes.
Why are your trees so much cheaper?
Because they're smaller, they're not six-inch caliper trees.
See, I think we need to identify that too, because six trees, his average is seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, whereas Teague, Donald Perkins is twenty-five hundred. That's a big difference.
I can...
She did mention in fairness that they were promised in two thousand and twelve, and perhaps we should, uh, plant some bigger ones that would have been growth.
I, I can get four to five inch trees for that price.
For seven thirty-four?
Mm-hmm.
So the Teague, Donald Perkins price was high?
I'd consider it a little high, although it's exponential, that's a six-inch tree, and literally it...
That's a big tree.
Uh, an eight-inch tree, an eight-inch tree is, I can't get for under three thousand dollars, per tree.
Not going now then.
But I mean, it literally, it's exponential per inch.
And then when you start getting into, anything above a six-inch tree, you start getting into some major logistical issues with planting it. I mean, you're, you're getting a crane, the hole that you've gotta dig, things like that, it starts...
That's, that's with parks planting those.
So we want, so are we wanting to say that it's six trees at six inches? Do we want to be really specific?
Or at four to five inches?
Or a not-to-exceed number, I think.
Yeah, a not-to-exceed number. Tim, I'm asking you, is your...
I was, well, I'm trying to get it from Adam, what he stated they needed from her property.
I feel very comfortable that we could make restitution and, and get her property up to what we need to do, and we should be able to do it for, um, under five, five thousand would be the, the top.
Yeah, that's what I would say to you.
Okay.
Because what, what do we do, ten percent on a contingency?
All right, so currently the amendment before us is to provide, uh, trees, up to six trees behind the Roberts' house, and if the mover and second would agree, we could add to an amount not to exceed five K.
Yeah, I would, yes.
Agreed.
So the mover and second has agreed, so the motion, Holly, would be, uh, Kurtz moved, seconded by Paro, uh, an amendment to provide six tree, up to six trees for the Roberts, behind the Roberts' house, not to exceed an amount of five thousand dollars. And that's an amendment to the main motion. All right, so that's the item we're debating. Everyone clear? All right, comments?
Need to vote. I, uh, I, I will say the reason that I seconded Tim's amendment, and the reason that I support this idea, I actually agree with Mr. Jensen wholeheartedly in that there is no way to fix every problem. What I heard is that we had a commitment, and so I'd like to just see us follow through on the commitment, more so than anything else, and, and in season it will provide some help with the light, which is, uh, the, the biggest issue measurably, so I'm gonna, I, I'm in favor.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amendment to provide up to six trees at an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars behind the Roberts' house, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous. We are now back to the main motion as amended, which the main motion as amended was, um, by council member Reed. Uh, who seconded?
Lamont?
I'll, I'll take credit for it.
Did you? It's late.
Holly, do you know who seconded it?
Was it, was the, uh...
The main, main motion?
Paro, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Jim, was that right?
Yes, sir. I was just trying to get my oxygen back here.
I'm sorry, I didn't make a note of it. So the motion was, um, that we proceed with the action that we took at the last council meeting as related to the Royal Troon area, and that that will be all what we would do with including the amendment to provide behind the Fitzgerald's home. Is that fairly stated, Garrett?
That's correct.
Not verbatim, but that's...
Yes.
Before we vote on that, I'd like to ask procedurally, there's additional, but really separate item I'd like to bring forward in the form of a motion. Is it better to vote on this and then just make another motion before we dispose of the item?
I, I think you'd be better off to amend this item because the motion that Garrett said, this is all we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was the end of his word, so I think if we take that motion, it will be hard-pressed to bring back something else.
Okay, in that case then, um, I'd like to offer an amendment to the main motion to direct staff to look at two things. Uh, one being to have an, uh, additional density of trees along the wall at the westernmost end to match the way the rest of the wall is. Um, and the second is, I would like to hear options for vegetation right up against the wall that can prevent people in the park from climbing onto the wall. And I'll speak to both and reasoning behind if I can get a second.
I'll second that.
I, I, can I say something?
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Uh, the motion is to direct staff to, um...
Is it a...
Look at adding additional vegetation along the west end of the wall, uh, that would be similar to what we're doing towards the east end of the wall.
Everything else but that portion, yeah.
And seconded by Paro, and that you wanted to hear options about vegetation that could prevent...
Yeah. Prevent people from, that would make it more difficult for people to climb on the wall, climb onto the wall from the park side.
And which sections of the wall are you talking about?
Can I say something before we debate?
I want to hear options for the whole thing, and then we can decide whether we do anything or not, there's just...
What do you mean, the whole thing?
The entire wall.
Okay, from Parkview all the way to the Mormon site?
Yeah, and you know what, if that's, if that's three hundred thousand dollars, it's three hundred thousand dollars, we're not gonna do it, but the, and I'll, the reason why, I got my second, so I'll tell you why I brought that up. That fence is those people's property. It's on their property line, they share it with the town. And we know there's people, I know a developer built it, but if it's on the property line, it's half theirs and half ours, and it's something nobody has really talked about, but we know that there's shenanigans with kids running around. If, if, if there's something there we can do with a bunch of shrubs or something, we should consider it as, as an issue. If that, if that was my fence, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like it.
All right, I'd like, Phil, let me say something.
Garrett's been trying to get the floor, and I'll come to you.
Okay. I, I think that Ryland's motion is out of order because it's in direct conflict with the main motion. You can't make, you're making an amendment to the motion that...
That's what I asked.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think, I think we need to ask Patricia, can you do that? Because my motion is that it's done. And he's saying, he's, yeah, he's, it's contrary to the motion. I think, I think what Ryland's saying is he, I think that's good conversation to debate whether or not we approve my motion, but I think that's contrary to what the motion is.
All right, so...
So I would, I would vote no.
Couldn't rule on whether it was out of order until I heard it.
Okay.
So it's a little hard to say you're gonna be out of order before you say anything, Ryland, but, but...
Point of order, sorry.
But, anyway, um... I think Ryland, if, if you were wanting to accomplish that, you would have to modify the... You'd have to include in your wording the elimination of that's all you're gonna do unless you somehow put it in there. So that's the problem with it, and, and here's the problem that we, that we have. The reality is that, that even though that motion is that's all we're gonna do, if someone wants to make a motion after that, you have a right to make a motion after that.
That's what I wanted to do, yeah.
And, and, um... Because even though you said that's all I're gonna do, next meeting you could bring up the same topic, you could debate the same topic, you might object to consideration, but the issue is, council, any two members can place an item on the agenda, so...
I, I, I agree with you there, Nick, and that's, and that's not what I meant, I'm talking about this specific. So what was brought before us was a recommendation from the park board, right? And so what I'm trying to do is bring finality to that recommendation from the park board. You're right, if two council members want to bring this issue up again, then that's fine, they can do that. But I, I want to get resolution to this issue that's been going on, I feel like since I was elected to this position.
And way before that, too.
And Ryland, that's really a different issue, people climbing over the fence, not filling in the space.
Well, but...
The issue is this wide, so this is the second meeting...
The issue that's been talked about is inclusive of all sorts of things. And, um, so, so here's what I'm gonna do. Um, Ryland, I'm gonna say that your, um, motion to amend is out of order, and, um, that'll take us back to the amended main motion that we will talk about. All right? So, uh, I would speak against the amended main motion, not because I don't want to bring finality to the thing, but just because of the confusion of those words that say, this is all we're gonna do. Uh, only because I think that makes us begin to debate the rights of a council member to do more than all we're gonna do. So, I don't think that we've adequately solved all the issues, because last time when we had the meeting... Because last time when we had the meeting, um, I don't think we really debated all the issues adequately. And so I'm gonna vote against the amended motion. So anybody else want to comment?
Uh, you said, that's all we're gonna do, but that's not in our motion, that's just an individual council member saying that, correct?
Uh, that is his motion, and, and I think it would be hard to take this same topic and continue to consider it when I think the mover was trying to close the debate, but it's really gray.
No, and, and Greg, Nick is correct, and it, what, what I'm trying to do is I'm not trying to end the future debate. What I'm saying is, we were, we tasked the park board to do something, right? They brought us back a lot of options. And what I'm saying is what we've done, my motion is what we've done is all we're going to do in regards to the park board's recommendation.
Okay, that helps.
Does that make sense? And I may have said wrong, so they brought us recommendations, we said we're gonna do these four or five things, and I'm saying, my motion is that that's all we're gonna do.
And that's the way I understood it, yeah. I have a question.
Oh, cause they recommended seven or eight or whatever things.
Why is my amendment out of order and Tim's amendment isn't?
Well, based on Garrett saying, uh, clarifying that in regard to the park board recommendations, um.
That was.
You took something and created, you created a new suggestion and amended the main.
No, I think it was, that was an original recommendation.
Well, so the first part of my amendment is the same then, cause it's trees.
It is, yeah.
Pow! Now, the, the, the wall thing I'll give you.
That's why the whole thing is out of, out of order.
I'll do it again if you want me to. Patricia, I'm sorry.
So maybe we do, maybe we do, Nick, need the opportunity to vote down Ryland's, I mean, vote for Ryland's. Motion, sorry, misspoke.
I don't laugh, I'm staff.
Funny's funny.
Oh, it's on video, don't worry about it.
Well, I, I, I think Ryland, I would agree with you that your motion is not out of order based on the clarification that in regard to the park board recommendations. And the park board recommendations, as I understand them, included more vegetation along the entire wall. And, um, so.
I will redact the baseball kids climbing over walls portion if my second will agree.
So I have a motion from Roe to direct staff to do two things, look at the addition of additional vegetation along the entire wall. And two, um, that the vegetation should, um, be, um, focused on addressing preventing people from climbing on the wall.
That and.
If that covers what you're saying or not.
That and the tree, the, 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 the tree density on the west end to match everything else, everything else along there. Cause it's a very, it's a very stark difference. Uh, again, I'll, I'd, I'd love to have the opportunity to explain my reasoning on both if we can ever get to that point.
Okay, so Councilmember Perro, do you agree that the motion includes, uh, that the tree density matched the other areas?
I most certainly do.
Then, then I make a motion to split the subject.
Oh, I saw that coming.
Uh, well, um.
I make a motion.
First of all, it's an amendment, and if you're splitting the subject, you have to split item one and two. You can't split the amendment from the motion.
Why?
Because you can't, cause it's not before you, the only thing before you is the amendment.
Yeah, and that's what I want to split, the amendment.
You're gonna vote it up or down?
All right, well, I guess I'll vote it.
Patricia, do you agree?
I agree, yes, the amendment stands on its own, and then we take the vote on the other main motion.
All right.
Well, I agree with half of it, but, oh, well.
Well, you can make another, you can re-split. So.
Okay, so let's make sure we, go ahead, you want to explain yourself?
Yes, first, I think I explained the up against the wall thing. We talk a lot about Harmony Park and how bare it is at Harmony Park, and it is, it is different. Of course, it's a different park and has different use patterns, but I mean, those people have nothing. But they have fences that you can't climb on. They have wrought iron fences that you really can't climb on, you get on them, you can't sit on them, if you do, you're going to the hospital. We know for a fact that people walk out in their backyard and see a kid sitting on their fence. And that's coming, that's not coming from their side, that's coming from our side. This is something that I completely forgot about, all the way through, all this time, we get so hung up on all these other things, but that's something that if I put myself in their shoes, that would burn me to no end. I, I think that there's probably some things that we could do, I don't know if it's gonna cost too much money to, uh, decide against it, you guys know I hate spending money, but I like hearing my options, so I'm asking to hear options. And then as far as the trees go, it's real simple. The trees up against the wall are planted on, there's two ki, two different kinds of trees, and the, one kind is planted on one interval, and another is on another interval, and they're very dense up until the last two lots on the western end. And is it really gonna make a difference to anybody? No, it's not gonna change anybody's noise, it's not gonna change anybody's light, it's not gonna prevent anybody from ever complaining again. I'm not trying to solve any of those problems, cause they're unsolvable. What I want to do is I want people to be able to drive up and look at that wall and get the feeling and get the sense that the town took an effort to treat everybody on the other side of the wall equally. That's it.
All right, Lamont?
Just clarification, Adam, uh, it was stated that the town has half of that fence, that's an HOA fence, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Yes. And number two, I just seems to me, you start putting vegetation on, on the fence, uh, on the wall, and all of a sudden discoloration.
No, 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 adjacent to, not on, not on. Like imagine if you had shrubs, similar to the Nellie Stevens that are there existing. You had shrubs up against it, you can't get on it to climb it, cause you're, can't climb on a hedge thing.
So you already got trees there, so you're gonna put hedges in between the trees.
Well, I don't know, that's why I'm asking for some options.
You don't have, you don't have trees up against the fence.
Really? Not like hard up against the fence, no.
They're several feet away.
But they're gonna grow.
Not down at the bottom, they're not.
All right.
That'd be a bush.
Is it be a bush? Well, can't you leave the tree at the bottom? You have to cut it.
Even if it is an HOA fence, it's, it sits on the property line between us and the homeowner.
All right, so, so I, before, Tim, before Shoffner had his end up first, but Tim.
I don't, I don't disagree, that's why I wanted to split it, because I don't disagree with what you're saying as far as trees. You go there and you, you, you know where the line, where they stopped. It's obvious, you know, very thick, and then it thins out, so I don't disagree with that part. I do disagree with the, I, I, I disagree with the scope of what you're trying to do from Parkview all the way.
But I'm just, know what I'm just asking for, options?
I know, but, but if you had limited that scope, I could have supported that.
You don't want to come, when it comes back, vote against it with me when it comes back?
See, they're gonna give us one option from Parkview all the way.
And we'll divide it up.
And so, but the problem is, is you have, right there, I guess around Ursula's, maybe past that, you have a berm. And it doesn't matter what we put there, they climb up on the berm and they're looking in the backyards, correct?
Yep, that.
So you're not gonna stop that.
To me, that's different, I'm not worried about looking in, I've just.
No, but I think that they can jump on the wall from that berm, it's that close. And so that's what, that's why I kept saying, are you sure from Parkview on, but I couldn't.
And, and here's just another issue, there was a concession made to build that wall, when that wall wasn't supposed to be built, it's supposed to be a clear fence. So if there was a clear fence, there wouldn't have been trees, there wouldn't have been bushes. So we compromised, and we built that wall for them so they wouldn't see the problem. Now, if someone's climbing over the fence, that's, but.
We, you didn't do that.
We, okay.
Nope.
We agreed.
There's always, there's always unintended consequences of any decision.
No, wasn't there an agreement with the town? Was there, was there an agreement with the town to build that wall?
There was permission given by.
We, we gave them permission.
Permission, agree.
It was originally a wrought iron fence, or, it could have been a wrought iron fence, or it could have been a wooden fence, and the developer asked in order to, um, create a nicer neighborhood to allow us to put in a masonry fence, which we felt was a higher standard than a wooden fence.
Trees, trees, that's, that's only trees.
Okay, so I'm trying to get some clarification here on what we have. So, uh, Ryland, option one, you began by saying to direct staff to, uh, provide additional density along the entire wall for trees.
To provide the, to provide the density of trees at the westernmost portion of the wall to match the rest of the wall. And that is in line with the recommendations, um, that came from the park board.
But, but you said the western end just then again, and, but you're extending from the west to the east.
No. I wish we had our map that we had up here for five hours earlier tonight, and now we don't have it, but.
But you then changed it a, a little later, earlier tonight, you said, in, along the entire wall.
No, that, the, the whole wall except for the westernmost portion, the very last two lots is all one way. It all looks one certain way, more or less. And then you get to the west, and you can see where they stopped planting trees. I just want the, that part on the west to look like the rest of it.
It's, sir, it's the, so are you looking for the part with just the original parking lot?
Yes, that's one way, that's a perfect way to explain it.
It's the original parking lot.
So let's, let's get that.
But the reason you can't do heavier trees there is you don't have a space, right?
Not true.
No, I can duplicate actually exactly what's along the eastern section. They actually have a little more space.
But you can't stagger them.
That was my.
No, they'll be linear, they'll be planted just, just like the other section.
That's why I'm arguing for this.
All right, I, the reason I'm trying to get this down is I'm not sure we're real clear about what the motion is.
Park board said, and Ryland's right, fill in vegetative gaps along wall, unanimous in favor. So they were unanimous on that.
So what is your motion? What do you really, let's, let's get words that work.
Said it the same way.
All right.
Okay.
It's an amendment, is it a motion or an amendment?
It's a, it's a motion to amend, yeah.
To, to, to plant trees at the western end of the wall adjacent to the original parking lot in such a fashion that their density is similar to the density of trees along the remaining portion of the wall.
Density is similar, is that what you said?
Yes, sir. It's a lot of work for something that's gonna not, not get voted for.
Um, Holly, do you think you've got all of that? All right, would you read what you got?
I plant trees on the western end adjacent to the parking lot in such a fashion that the density is similar to the remaining portion of the wall.
All right.
So did I miss something that in the, I guess in the, in the proposal you put out, or, I thought we had to pull out cement to be able to put trees, any trees over there?
Is that because of an easement, or utilities?
No, sir, the, the, um, the, the portion of the wall, Councilmember Rose talking about, that's the section from the original parking lot, it's actually a little wider in that section, there's no, there's no utilities in that section there. There's still a very narrow, still very narrow. So what you'd be looking at is dropping them, just the same as the eastern section, you'd be dropping the trees in between the Nellie R's, moving all the way forward, which would duplicate the look of the other side of the pool parking lot.
And so where, whose house does that end up behind?
That ends up behind the Bucks, uh, Mr. Ray's.
In a portion of the third lot.
Third lot, I don't, I think they're renters, I don't know the third lot, I don't know.
So you're only covering behind the parking of the original pool design?
Correct, yeah.
And then the new parking lot has all the new trees. I got you, okay.
All right, then there was a second part of your motion that you wanted to hear options for vegetation that would prevent people from climbing on the wall.
Or dissuade, yes.
All right, so I, I, I think if, if that's your, now that I understand that, and if Philip wanted to, to make a motion to deal with those separately, I think that would be appropriate, if you told, if you deal with item one and two of his motion.
I make a motion to deal with the items separately.
Okay, so Philip has asked, um, to divide the motion to amend. And I think that's in order. Patricia? Okay, so it does not require a second.
Right, exactly.
It, the motion divide says we will vote separately on the two items, but they become, uh, the motion is, is solved by the vote being separate. All right? So item one is to plant trees at the western end, do you want to read that for us, Holly?
Plant trees on the western end adjacent to the parking lot in such a fashion that the density is similar to the remaining portion of the wall.
Okay, and, uh, Perro, you're okay with that wording?
Sir.
All right, any discussion about this portion of the motion?
Yes.
All right, Garrett?
What does the remainder of the wall mean?
I know, that's.
It runs from the wall, so all the way down to the LDS church.
Can we pull up a map, can we pull up a map? Is there any way we can pull up a map?
What you're saying is the trees are all the same, the rest of the way.
I've looked at this four hundred billion times, and I.
You sound like my wife, you had my, looked at it four hundred.
He's got a newborn at home.
He said the houses.
Make it all look the same, I mean.
But I think, Garrett, your point is, based on what Adam said, it's stopping, it's not along the rest of the wall. So that's what's unclear, and that's what I'm really trying to get at.
It is, the, the, the trees are all very close together, all the way along the rest of the wall. I mean, you guys have looked at these aerials as much as I have, I, I don't understand why this is so difficult to grasp.
I should have brought pictures, I looked at it, looked like there was a ton of trees to me.
There are, and that gets to my whole point, is, it's, I mean, it's all about making it all look the same.
Seven years from now, you'll be pulling half of them out.
Yes, you will, and all the ones that are already, half of the ones are already planted too.
We lost connectivity somehow?
Yeah.
So late.
Because there's, uh, utilities with that.
Well, we talked about that there's utilities, but we couldn't plant trees.
See how, see how they go.
So there's spaces where they get tight, 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 tight.
Tight all the way through here. Those are still much tighter than here, look at them, look how tight, those are as tight as those.
Yo, diabetes man, calm down.
That'll work. Does this go to the network? Can it go to the network?
There you go. All right, area two and, and, and eastern, you can see that everything is closer together. And from that point of the border, area one to the west, they're.
Further apart.
Visually significantly further apart.
But are you going, so what about down in area three, where it gets a little sparse there?
Those are, those are, I think that's just a.
That's still, that's significant difference, because they died and they replanted and they're not.
They're just not as full, they're, uh, they're still that close together, they're just not as full, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're just throwing money away. Those trees in a couple of years are gonna be wide, without pulling out trees.
Okay, the item that we're dealing with is to plant trees at the western end adjacent to the wall in such a fashion that their density is similar to the east, uh, the eastern end. Now, here's the problem, those are not trees that are in area one and area two, are they?
They're, yes.
I thought they're just bushes.
No, they're, 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 they're live oaks, and they're spaced with Nellie R Stevens, so.
I don't see the inner space if that's really an aerial map.
Not in area one, but in area two they are.
Area two is where they are?
No, area two, that's what I mean, area, area one just has the Nellie R's, right.
Area one just has the Nellie R's, no trees.
That's correct.
So.
So that's my point, plant the live oaks in between them, and then in eight to ten years, as you guys projected, pull out the Nellies. Eight to ten years.
Okay, so you're, you're trying to say, in area one, plant the trees similar to what's in area two, or further?
And on, yes, just so that you have that coverage and density that's similar.
All right.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Would you go, is it?
Would you go, is it just to the end of the parking lot, or is it, is it to the end of the lot off of Parkview? The Nellyars go all the way, the Nellyars should go all the way, they go all the way down. They'll go all the way down to here.
Yes, all of it.
Okay.
The wall, yeah.
So it's, so it's here to here?
Yeah.
All of area one?
Okay.
Is that what you're meaning?
Yes, sir.
We're looking at like seventeen, maybe even more?
But this was already discussed in the previous, uh,
Right.
Parks recommendation, right, so?
Sixteen parking spaces.
Yeah.
About sixteen trees.
Live oaks. If, if they are to match.
Sixteen times eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, right in there.
I'm rounding.
Fifteen thousand?
Plus whatever down by area three, people feel like they need something.
Five thousand.
I, I, I don't think it's our job to be fashion police. I don't think we're supposed to make things look one way or another, I think, you know, there's a buffer, I'll speak to that. I think there's a two, there's a buffer that's light and noise, and I think that's debatable. And nobody will ever agree on that. I don't think it's a city's job to make sure that all the bushes along the streets and walls are equal and look pretty and nice.
Well, we don't have to have a light and noise, a- anything visual or acoustic, we've determined that that doesn't apply in this case.
So, so let him finish his comments, Ryland.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was done.
All right.
I'll, I'll say, so when this site was conceived, someone decided it'd be a good idea to plant some trees. Then it turned out maybe some people felt it wasn't enough, so we're gonna do more. But we didn't do it for everybody, and we all know this is a major source of complaint, and really, if you're talking about what's there now, it's not a tree in the sense of what, what, what we're talking about planting, I think is what, what I just heard from Adam. Is it's a Nelly R. Stevens thingy. Uh, so, again, this is just kinda fulfilling the, uh, if you take that with the five thousand that Tim proposed for the other part, that's fifteen plus five was twenty, and the, the park board proposal was twenty-two, right, so that is in line with what they were recommending.
All right, Lamont?
Adam, way back when, four years ago, whatever, in those negotiations, wasn't it those two homes that negotiated with the town manager and for X amount of dollars in trees and so wasn't that the plan back then, and that's when they were put in? What, what was the deal with the, uh?
Which, which trees you talking about, which area?
Well, area one, anywhere, they, 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 they were the ones that negotiated uh, with the town manager to put trees in or, or bushes, whatever you call them.
Area one was, most of those Nellyars came back with the amount where council originally sought, I believe it was the ten thousand dollars. It was populated along, it was really sort of the whole wall, but definitely focus was on the, the pool area. But then like, like, uh, what Councilman Rowe is saying, we did come back, I was directed to come back, and we did inter space the live oaks on the one section, the one half of the pool. But the original amount was, it was ten thousand dollars to come in and plant along the gaps along the pool walls, and that's where the Nellyars came in as well.
And whose decision was it to put the Nellyars in and not a tree? Was there an agreement that those were the ones that they wanted to be put in?
I don't know if they ever had a clear agreement what they wanted, I mean, I'll be honest with you, there were so many, the spacing's very tight, obviously, that's why I say there, there'll be. Area two is much narrower, it narrows down much more than area one does. You know, the, the Nellyars eventually, Nellyars will go, um, they'll do, they'll do eighteen feet.
Yeah. And they're very dense.
And how wide?
Uh, oh, they'll
Five, six feet wide. I mean, that will become one continuous huge shrub that will grow up, I mean, they're, they're great as a
If we just leave it alone?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, I mean, like in my backyard, I've, I, you know, I planted them in, for that very reason, for privacy, because they grow tall, and they grow very thick, and they're evergreen. And they're, and they're prickly, so people can't
Jump on a wall.
Jump on the wall.
But they're not fast growing, they're, they're
Yeah, they're kind of a moderate grower.
So time will solve this issue.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion to plant trees at the western end starting at the western end of the wall similar to what was down at the other end. And it's covering area one only. Is that correct? And, uh, that's estimated an amount of, what did you say, how many trees?
Sixteen trees, you're looking at thirteen K.
Okay. So, um, the motion, I'm not gonna ask him to amend the motion to not exceed a dollar amount, but I just want you to know that as you're voting.
I felt like that was implicit in the park board recommendation.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, um, and, and I would hope that in this, and also i- if we approve this, and, and we've already approved Tim's, that we use tree mitigation money for this, so it's not, this is, maybe we need to fully understand that this is not gonna come out of, you know, a general fund account, this is gonna come out of a tree mitigation, if we have it.
We have ten thousand dollars available now. We'll get Dr. Crumpton pays again next fall, so that's about seventy-three hundred.
Yeah, but I believe we have another, uh, another set of mitigation monies coming.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
Would've had twenty-five thousand.
The development.
Adam, were they park board recommendations or just options that they sent to us?
I believe council asked the park board to examine, um, a multitude of issues, and so there were ones that the park board were, felt they could reasonably get behind. So to say those were recommended by themselves, they weren't, but they did, they did approve that for the vegetation along the wall. I mean, I don't think they selected one, because they knew that council, the direction at the time was to solve the issue once and for all, so they voted for all of them except removal of concrete.
No, but they voted that, for that expe-
Specifically.
Specifically, and it was unanimous.
Yes, sir.
So that, there, there were certain things that they voted individually.
I guess now you, you, now you're talking about
They wanted thirty-one trees in the beginning, or you, you came up with thirty-one, and we're at twenty-two. Who, who's not getting them that is now gonna come back, if we were to say this? I mean, now knowing that those are gonna be giant bushes, I mean, that you put in later for that purpose. So what, what the park board came in, I'm just trying to understand this, it said, we put in these giant bushes behind the first two homes, and they're gonna take ten years to mature, so we should put trees in, in the me, in the meantime? Because we're gonna then have to pull the bushes out later? Is that, I mean, was that the thinking?
No, I don't think, I think the, the thinking at the time, speaking for the board, was to completely deal with the issue in all aspects, some of the trees, what you're talking about, the, the missing trees, would be like on the slopes, which those won't go in now under this particular thing, the ones with Ursula. So if you're just addressing near the homes, um, yeah, it wa- was to basically vegetate any gaps in the entire run from, from the beginning to the end.
I got you, okay.
So do you think that they understood that the vegetation that's there today is supposed to grow together and create one solid wall of vegetation?
No, I don't think they realized that, I mean, that eventually there would be a conflict between the trees and the tall shrubs.
Actually planting other trees in the middle of that is counterproductive to the original plan that was put together, which is to make a wall of
The shrubs would have to come out, at some point.
My personal observation of that is that the shrubs were planted too far from the wall to have any effect on trying to keep people from looking at the wall personally. I don't think they're gonna grow that thick, and that the, part of the purpose for trees was provide sound and light buffers. And you solve the lighting problem more with shields, and so the trees aren't necessarily gonna do much more, other than there'll be some filter involved there. But they're still gonna provide, vegetation provides a better sound buffer than a wall does. The hard wall makes the sound reflect and vibrate and increase. Vegetation does not do that.
And I will agree with you, Mayor, the one thing, the advantage of the trees, I'll say this, the trees over the Nellyars is the Nellyars will peak at the top, so the broadest part of the Nellyar will be behind the wall.
Right.
Whereas the trees, it will be above the wall, that is correct.
That's right.
So let me just understand this. We plant these trees, all this stuff grows, ten years from now, we're gonna be ripping something out. Is that what you're telling me?
You're already gonna do that in area two and all the way along, right?
Well, specifically where, there's a little different differentiation farther down the wall of what there is, you have some wax myrtles and different, you have a different variety of plants, but specifically to the pool parking lot, yes, the Nellyars will have to give way to the live oaks, they won't be able to
So, so the previous council, or who, whichever council, they knew that, and they voted to approve that, is that what you're telling me?
Well, the previous council voted to approve
Dollar amount.
The, the dollar amount, and then the Nellyars went in, so yes, but the live oaks, the live oaks under the one section of the pool came later. And that was under a different direction.
So all of that in area two and area three, eventually is gonna have to be ripped out. Not all of it, but every other one.
The Nellyars, which aren't as expensive, the Nellyars will have to come out, with, if a live oak's next to them.
And define not as expensive, how much did all that cost?
Nellyars probably ran us about, um, I, I spent a while, so I bought a large Nellyar, probably, Nellyars probably ran in the high threes.
Yeah, they're not, I mean, they're not, they're not cheap.
I didn't say they're cheap.
If you buy a nice sized one.
So here's the problem.
I mean, they're not as much as a nice sized tree.
The Nellyars are what provide someone from walking up to the fence.
Yeah, but
When they're fully grown.
They come out, the live oaks aren't gonna stop that at all.
No.
But what I'm saying, right, exactly, so you're gonna, we're gonna be pulling those out eventually when the live oaks, are those all live oaks?
Trim them down, right? You trim them down. You don't let them get up high.
What's the normal growth pattern?
That's what I'm trying to ask, are we going to pull these out? Or are they gonna stay and you're gonna trim them all the time?
The Nellyars?
Right.
I, I, I don't think you'll be able to, I, I really don't, I think
They'll be able to what?
Trim the Nellyars between the live oaks eventually. They're both fighting for space, the live oaks will, the live oaks will touch. I, I don't think the Nellyars, I think they will come out.
Really, the live oaks are probably too close.
Live oaks are, that's what I'm trying to say, the Nellyars won't be able to stand between live oaks.
And I can tell you that when I talked with Tom Rutledge concerning his recommendations, it went against what we discussed, went against what his landscape architect on staff would recommend for trees, I, you know, uh, my, my direction
Dead or the live oaks?
The live oaks.
Live oaks.
Are, that they're too close together, they need to be forty foot apart, and we want twenty.
What about the root system, does that affect the wall? Because we have some problems on, in the, in our HOA.
The live oaks have a pretty decent root system, absolutely, it'll, it'll go into the, the property owners, because it's, it's bordered by a parking lot on one side.
We have the problem, we, we gotta replace the wall, so that's, so that's affecting the wall as the trees mature.
All right, so you have a motion to amend that part A of it says to plant trees at the western end starting at the beginning of area one similar to the density that is on the western end. All right.
Let, let me read you guys something real quick that Jim pulled up. Talking about Nelly R. Stevens, plant them five to six feet, feet apart. Basically behind a wall that will give you a complete privacy.
No holes, no gaps, five to six feet apart.
I think that's what you got, basically.
I mean, that's, I'm not sure what you just pulled up there, but
That's the growth pattern of the Nelly R. Stevens, it'll grow three feet per year. Thrives on neglect. Uh, perfect for hedges and private, that's what it says. That's what it says. It thrives on neglect, I'm just reading from the, from the horticultural site here. And, uh, they grow two to three feet per year without pruning. When they reach the height you want, you clip off the leader, and it will slow them down, and they'll thicken out.
And I, I, I'm telling you
It's also a birdwatchers delight, just as a side note.
There you go, that'd be my perfect tree. I, I have, uh, five live oaks. We will have another set of problems eventually from all these residents with acorns and leaves dropping.
I got them in my front yard.
All right, so we have a motion to amend before us, part A of it. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
I'd like to apologize for wasting everybody's time. We have a bunch of people that don't have any idea what our plan is, and they're, and there's, and half of them are politically active, it makes it that much worse. I just, I think we need to communicate better, that's all I have to say about that, Forrest Gump.
Okay.
He's got a newborn at home, you can tell.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we're gonna vote. All those in favor of the first part of the motion to amend, raise your hands. All opposed, same sign.
All this time, I don't
It's unanimous that option one failed. We're now dealing with option two, or part two of the motion to amend, that you wanted to hear options about vegetation that would prevent people from climbing on the wall.
And given what we heard from gentleman horticulturist Perro, sounds like the solution was designed three years ago. We're good.
Nobody told us.
We have to vote, if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna approve this, it is an approved motion, it's been divided, we have to vote, all right?
Sorry.
All those in favor of option two of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. The motion to amend, part A and B fails.
Well, we learned something, so, I mean, we, we actually learned
They, they worked with order mercy.
It was a good exercise, because we actually learned
We know more now about the vegetation than anyone in this town knows. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
We're back to the main motion, which Councilmember Reed made, and Tammy, I'm, I mean, Tammy, Holly, I'm gonna ask you to go back, see if you can find that motion, what I have is that the action took in the last council meeting are the actions that we have taken, and no further action will be taken in regard to the park board recommendations.
Yes, it was just, uh, taken at the last council meeting for the Parks Board, uh, recommendations and no further action to be taken. Reed had made the motion, and, uh, Perro
Perro seconded. But, and when you said with the amendment, Kurt's amendment.
The Kurt's amendment.
All right, which said, um,
That were promised.
Right.
For the amended motion?
Yeah, amended to provide trees
I have
Behind the robbers.
Yes, I have six trees, not to exceed six trees, and, and not to exceed five thousand dollar price, which was voted on and approved. I couldn't tell you who made the motion or seconded it, but I have that as my notes.
And Row seconded.
Okay.
All right, so somehow that has to go before no further action regarding to the park board recommendations. Are
Did you vote on that already?
It was already voted, so it's already
We already added that somehow, I'm just not quite sure where it got added.
Right at the beginning.
Yeah.
First.
Okay.
Yeah, an hour and a half ago.
And that was unanimous, that, that amendment, all right?
Yes.
So the motion as amended, uh, is before us, any debate?
Please no.
All right. I'm gonna vote against it, just to let y'all know about that, because I don't wanna end the thing, so. All those in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Sanders and Perro are opposed, the motion does carry. All right. Uh, that was item thirteen, and the other item, I mean, is it, no, yeah, thirteen. And the other item we need to deal with is sixteen. Consider and take appropriate action regarding amendments to the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances. Um, and something happened to the printer, and I can't read that. Sorry about that. Chapter five, section four, signed regulations as proposed by the Planning and Enzoning Commission. Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, if you would dare entertain such a treacherous option.
Slowly, distinctly, what the motion is.
I will, uh, well, it's been so long, I gotta think about it, um, but I will make a motion that, uh, we direct the town attorney to review the red line version of the proposed signed regulations ordinance as it was delivered by the P and Z Commission, and make any Proposed changes. That she would deem necessary. And then re, uh, and then deliver that to council.
Second.
For further consideration.
All right, now second. So we have a motion by Rowe, seconded by Reed. Holly, do you feel comfortable that you got that?
Yes, I can go back and listen to it, but basically to direct town, the town attorney to review the red line, uh, for the signs, uh, delivered by the planning and zoning commission and make any proposed changes that she deems necessary and deliver to the town council.
All right, any discussion?
Can I make amendment to the motion?
Yes, you can.
I don't want to, I just wanted to know if I could.
This was happens after twelve o'clock. All right, uh, well, that was a good amendment, but okay. All right, all in favor of the motion, please show your hands, all opposed, same sign, it is unanimous, no opposed. Council, I believe we've dealt with all the items, uh, Mayor Portim, Lamont, have we dealt with everything?
Absolutely.
All right, the time is twelve thirty-one and we are adjourned.